The time is now 5:02 PM on Monday, January 22nd. I call this special affairs committee to order. Are there role call that? We have six members present. I've been in the press for changes and we're just a general manager. The chairman of the national person for board.
You will be with the agenda. The agenda is the draft on the agenda's to say another one.
No, the final has two additional resolutions. Three forty one first. Although we are reaching for power central from three nine zero one five. So ready to pass? How are the resolutions and attachments for one president?
Could we please have those?
They're all in the agenda.
I know what I'm talking about. And it goes on to the end. I don't have an email of the mind of draft. Thank you. It's hard to know if I want to add anything to this. Oh, then chair, I'd like to add one. The resolution affirming the city in support of congressional annualize calls for the ceasefire for Gaza. And two, resolution approving reallocation of our funds to the board, our funds to my community college.
What's up fam?
And number three, resolution approving reallocation of our funds to the name of the engagement club for charity association. And four, resolution approving a reallocation of our funds to, or to name group engagement fund for replacing the zero turnovers. And then five, resolution to respond to the affairs and these many answers screening the list as well. And I so. Unless you want to add another.
Hi, I'm not a question. Are there any more pressure changes for the additions to the agenda?
Yes.
Does the chairman recognize the council?
I don't know, but Eva here, everything passed.
Resolution for reaching out to priority vice manager to add Martin King there to add a holiday.
Now they want to add Martin King.
And resolution. Two on that. And the other resolution, the other resolution is the resolution to appoint captain free line to help care to the human basis.
Come on, good evening everybody, good evening. Yeah.
All right, so resolution for priority, what is the number six? And then the resolution for your number seven. Is that all? All right, are there any more pressure changes and additions to the agenda? All right, last time, any more pressure changes in addition to the agenda? All right, Madam Clerk, is the timer working now? Are they able to see, because I hope we can't see it on our end. No. We are having some technical difficulties, the clerk will keep time for you. We. When we move into public speaking, I do want to read the disorderly persons, city co subvention, any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Co Section thirty one dash ten disorderly conduct assault and battery and disorderly persons and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed. We're having technical difficulties, so thank you for your patience.
They having technical difficulties, their mics, their new mics don't work in the half a million dollar chamber. Back to the show.
What, it's over right now?
Testing, yep, please go ahead, sir.
Okay, my name is Howard L Mitchell. Uh, to address the situation over in Vosna of a cease fire that you had on and, and in the words of Jesus Christ himself, if my peoples were on this earth and seek my faith, then I would heal the land. That goes for the opera money too, and Flint, for over, with them twenty two houses, twenty four houses we gonna build over on Saginaw Street, but it gonna be built by the American
Oh, you see that pole?
Rescue plan, two eighty seven, and like the people, so you don't have to be dipping into our fifty million dollars, which our brother take, when the people's on, on the roof in Ward one, and Catholic charity, that's the name of it, that's sacred high, I believe they black Catholics, and like the fellowship of Christ, I mean Christ fellowship, Christ the King and brother the Coca Cola company should have followed lead on top of that and showed some charity to the doctors over on Saginaw Street and, and Miss Christie war too, they keep, but running up for old houses and nobody can, and the cameras don't work right, all the millions out we put in this camera situation and you see what happened last week, the, the Pope O, that man that, Miss Byron, she ain't here today because he talking about you telling where the cameras at and, and he know, if it, if that's easy to tell the crooks where the cameras at, Miss Christie's gonna be tough, running her mouth all the time, talking about looking like Miss Daisy tough, who gonna drag this Daisy out of this and drive her around, keep her from scamming and, say something, Miss Daisy. Well, anyway, welcome back, school teacher from the flu situation, when somebody come down to take care of this and other, the business of friends, you out participating, you and your students, but if you get out here today, gonna have to turn around and get, is they paying? Thank God, but welcome back, anyway, America, stay tuned because Flint is on the move again, and Murphy gonna get in the way, there's something them thirteen thousand dollar line boys and all that, we might water the jet like Prince flying out, represent that marijuana, but, but don't play with like that Coca Cola.
Thank you, next public speaker, please. All right, I'm starting the timer, hold it then.
All right, my name is Melissa Zronski, I live in the sixth ward. Um, you know, I really wanted to meet her last week, but you know, I get really better after I disturbed my body, so I made sure I was here today because what I see and what happened at the city council last week was ridiculous, even after I left, uh, people were there, you'd sit there and say what you said about Dennis Piper was so wrong, it's unreal, and then you'd just sit there and talk about with your brother, his brother don't run in no office, ain't doing nothing around here, oh, don't give me that look, honey, right, because everybody knows and hears it, okay? Well, Dell Lewis. You sit there and you tell people how they need behave and do this, you know, you talk about, well, that's kind of funny, honey, because one of my friends is a, a man in Texas, he would like to sit there and post my picture when I went through stage three breast cancer back in twenty twenty, okay, and then he wants to tell me how I'm gonna die and all that, that's your friend, and I'm really seeing how you're really supporting people, I mean, they, they, where do y'all get your minds from? I mean, seriously, it's y'all think alike, you go after people's kids, you go after people, you look, these two white men, this dude right here, P two, whatever his DM name is, and that Matthew's all the way back there, right?
We gotta get Kermit away from Mr. Peach, Kermit, 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 come back down here, don't sit over here by that man, I don't want it, don't get in trouble.
Do we still have that? Because I'm guessing that's gonna be appropriate, because you allow these two white men do this to a black woman, okay? That's an issue. And you don't want to take accountability for your own actions and what the hell are you on here for? Oh, sorry, that's right, y'all got some ARPA money, y'all got some kickbacks on Ashley Capital, and I mean, damn, I mean, and Quincy, I really did have high hopes for you, you know, but, you know, you sat there and said, even before you got in office, you would never, never do the residents like they were doing you before you got on council, and what are you doing to the residents? You're doing exactly what the other ones were doing before you got here, that's sad, you couldn't even keep your word, the residents is what, how, how you guys got your job? And then, but residents don't get no ARPA money, right? All this resolutions for this ARPA money, how's that coming from the ARPA money and the, that money was put into the general?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next public speaker, please.
He went over there to make sure she was keeping time, because their timer don't work.
My name is Sijah Locke, and I have the honor of serving as the executive director of the Arab Grand Court of Wisconsin. Um, as an organization dedicated to uplifting and empowering our communities through advocacy, we firmly believe in the importance of solidarity and the pursuit of justice for oppressed communities. Today and every day, we stand in unoplatable solidarity with Palestinian people and their struggle and resistance against the ongoing oppression, human rights violations and occupation inflicted upon them by Israeli government. As of today, over thirty thousand Palestinians have been killed with more than twelve thousand of their children. Israel's escalation of this violence and genocide campaign has been further enabled and strengthened by the United States' continued support and military funding, with billions of dollars being used to occupy, displace and murder Palestinians. The local implications of this cannot be overstated. This is our taxpayer money that can be used to address local issues such as education, healthcare, the expansion of social services and more, all of which have been underfunded because money is instead going to fund genocide and occupation. With the proposal of this ceasefire resolution tonight, Flint joins a growing number of cities and communities worldwide that are calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Israel's brutal violence in the occupied territories and its treatment of Palestinians are in direct violation of international law and fundamental principles of justice, equality and human rights. It is our duty to speak out against injustice and suffering that has persisted for parts of our home. As our communities here in Flint continue to mobilize and implement local actions, I call on representatives on the council to join us in calling for an immediate ceasefire and demanding justice for Palestinians.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Laura Althi, and I'm a student at the University of Michigan Flint. I'm a proud Palestinian American. It's day one oh nine, day one oh nine of the genocide, ethnic cleansing, collective punishment, mass killing and mass bombing of a Palestinian in Gaza. Over thirty thousand deaths, ninety percent displaced and one percent of the Gaza population murdered. How much longer will we sit, will we sit back and witness the innocent people of Palestine being massacred? Gaza has been an illegal air prison for decades, illegal settling, shooting and bombings. This has been an ongoing issue, the Palestinians have been dehumanized for seventy years, seventy years of Israel's terror. Steal this magnitude of injustice justified and ignored for decades is immoral. A ceasefire resolution must be passed, we must stop the disgusting and horrific acts against Gaza, we will never forget the lives lost and now we must prevent any further lives from being taken. It is unacceptable that our tax dollars are going towards funding a genocide rather than investing in this country to provide goods and services to the American people. Having a ceasefire resolution passed in Flint is an important step to working towards a permanent ceasefire from the United States government. To stand with Palestine is to stand with humanity, to stand with Palestine is to stand with the Palestinians who had and have dreams and aspirations, to stand with Palestine is to stand with the six year old boy who went there and played movie who served twenty six times to death for simply being a Palestinian. He had dreams, he had aspirations, he had a future. I'm asking you today to pass the ceasefire resolution now, thank you.
Hello, my name is Estee, and I'm a resident of the Flint community and a student from the University of Michigan Flint. More importantly, I'm a Palestinian American with family in Gaza who have been undergoing the textbook definition of ethnic cleansing these past hundred and nine days. Over thirty one thousand Palestinians have been murdered in this ongoing genocide, over twelve thousand children have been massacred by the occupation. My cousin, along with his eighteen year old son, were murdered in their homes by the Israeli occupation forces in Gaza exactly a month ago today. If a ceasefire had been declared earlier, they would have been here with us today. I want to remind you that Palestinian life is a human life, it is not a number, it is not a human animal, it is not a savage and it is not a terrorist. A Gaza child by the name of Pidad writes, if I died, remember that I, we were individuals, humans, we had names, dreams and achievements, and our only fault was that we were classified as inferior. The only thing that distinguishes Palestinian Americans within our Flint community from those abroad is our location. It disgusts me that billions of our hard earned tax dollars are funding the genocide of innocent men, women and children. Passing an immediate ceasefire resolution in Flint is one step towards establishing a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I am standing in front of you today asking you to release a statement addressing Palestinian suffering as more than just an afterthought and to bring attention to the massacre occurring in Gaza. It should not take two million Gazan corpses for our community to come to terms with the violence of Israeli settler state, thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, please.
Tara Marina Wallens from the House committees. First of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor and to the council for entertaining this, um, resolution to fund our organization in which we provide recovery support services for people dealing with addiction. These opioid settlement dollars, at this point, what I see with this council are going to where they need to go, and we're not seeing that with every community, so again, thank you. And I wanted to just kind of let you guys know where we're at, our organization, we just recently received a transportation grant to be able to transport participants to treatment, detox, uh, recovery support services basically within Genesee County, and that's been huge for our community because transportation has been such a barrier. So with this money, if it passes, we'll be able to continue to provide these much needed services to our community and to be able to have reduction for those lives that have been lost to overdoses. I know that I have lost friends, colleagues, lovers and family members in this opioid epidemic, so thank you so much again for the work you're making with the community because I know how hard it is. Thank you. Next public speaker, please.
Good afternoon, councilmen and councilwomen and residents of Flint, my name is Monica Robinson, and I'm coming to you to be in home cabinet, South Side City of Hope, and I had, I think she'll need to know.
Dr. Pedroni, are you there? I got their information for you.
About us applying for a grant, we applying for, probably opera firm, and we just need to get clarity, we understand that most of the money, forty million, and how much it was, was put into the general firm, but I wanted to give you some information and maybe you can, uh, get back with us, email or something about this, because I know most of the time you do get correspondence back. Right now, it still says the status is under review, and we applied for the, the program name was academic, economic development grant, and it was, the grant name was youth job training. The, it was submitted on March the twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. The application ID number is APP, it is five zero, zero zero zero, zero zero, one three zero two. Uh, we have it produced with, the producer name is Brennan L Park Senior Community Corporation. At the time, our name was Saint John Senior Hope Community Development Nonprofit Housing Corporation, when we applied for these opera funds, and we applied for a hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. We recently changed our name to South Side City of Hope because we didn't want to confuse the community, offering the service in the whole city of Flint, Saint John is on the opposite side of town, and we didn't want to cause towns to be confused, so we changed our name, you know, there's a community over in Saint John area, and we're gonna be on the south side of town, so we changed our name to South Side City of Hope, and when we applied for the grant in March, it was for Saint John City of Hope Development Nonprofit Corporation. So what we would like to know is, what is the status? And if you could email us, let us know what's going on, maybe you could pull out that five hundred thousand, thousand, that five hundred thousand dollars and help us out of that forty mil, which I put in a general fund and we're helping South Carolina, so we really would like to know what the status is, because when we go in, it still says it's under review. So an email is something, I mean, it's really nice if you guys came back with us to let us know the status, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Praise God, moving all is possible, without food, nothing is possible. Honorable counsel, mayor's office, city attorney's office, Madam Clerk, council secretary, public safety, uh, local media, eight tier media, U.S. Honorable residents of the great and beautiful city of Michigan, citizens of the United States and the world, I rise and spend myself as much time as I can consume to extend the Bible of my life. I'm very excited, sir. Former, former candidate for Rhode Island, first district, US Congress person, twenty twenty three, current candidate for the president of the United States, twenty twenty four, please hold that. Madam President, I'd like to take this time during the party weekend holiday to acknowledge the passing of two honorable residents of Michigan, Mr. Bunka, Leanne Lawson, who has been very well, Lola Sparkle, Leanne Senior, Lori, Leanne Duhon, and Zoe French, the, uh, the Real Brothers, who got help of this Chio's family. So him and Sal, he, uh, he made that, Eric Boersch, dear friend of mine, my heart goes out to the family, and, uh, I hope they rest in peace. Madam President, I rise tonight to nominate the candidate for the next mayor of Michigan, and that candidate is Miss Teresa Chiozzi. Uh, anyone interested in Teresa being your next mayor in twenty twenty six, please follow the hashtag Rissa, R E S S A, twenty twenty six, Rissa twenty twenty six. Thank you, council, and you and Becky Dallas in my turn, hashtag Larry twenty twenty four, please support, pattern, Ms. Tracy Ellis Ross, hi Tracy, uh, hi.
Okay. Very clear for pressure.
Hello everyone, I'm Dr. Manthus, retired social worker from the seventh ward. Some unethical council members are falsely promising free money for home repairs, from opera funds, it's your money, they say. They use these promises of direct payments to attack political opponents and find they're blocking them, when that's due to the strict ARPA regulations the city must follow. Let's be clear about ARPA's purpose, ARPA is not about, is about extending a helping hand with proper oversight, not about playing political games. Promises of free money for home repairs may sound appealing, but they are false. The federal government explicitly does not provide free money for home repairs. We must see through these false promises, especially when they are used to tarnish the reputation of anyone who points them out. Turning our attention to the head, tens of billions of ARPA funds have been allocated to address our city's specific needs, including home repair. However, these initiatives must adhere to ARPA regulations, which are beyond the control of local politicians. In safeguarding our community, we must remain vigilant against scams and misinformation. Let me say it again, the government does not offer free money to individuals to repair or improve their homes. It uses these very words on its website, Google it, people who say otherwise are simply making up or manipulating facts for political gain. The situation we face is critical, please understand the value of the challenge that confronts us. Unethical promises and other unethical conduct are not just about political maneuvering, they represent a threat to the very core of our community's integrity. We see the weaponization of race, we see efforts to manipulate honorable residents through false promises, we see recalls for the hounding of duly elected council members, we see the defamation of our mayor, all this is driven by voters that go far beyond other services, in the end, it's always about money. If these scammers take over the majority and thus have control of the city's budget, there's a real risk of Flint becoming a pay to play jurisdiction. The good people of Flint deserve better, we must be vigilant against any form of manipulation within our governments, be it financial scams or the divisive tactics of race greed. Sadly, in our current climate, any opposition to such views is quickly labeled as racist. This kind of evergreen is a threat, not just to our city's budget, but to the very fabric of our community, it's a tactic I will address more in my next speech, thank you.
Thank you, is anyone else who was just addressed, council?
Claire Latherton. A couple of issues, number one, the previous speaker don't know what the hell he talking about. And we get tired of that old trope about free money, people want free money, the people that need the money are the people that built this city. They wrote at General Motors, they retired, they need home repairs, they need home rehabilitation, they're living on limited, we're living on limited incomes, and you all need to stop twisting things. Nobody hollered about free money when Ashley Capital came down here, I hate to keep eating that dead course. Nobody was talking about free money when, uh, community first come down here, and that's just a lie that ARPA money cannot be used for home rehab and rehabilitation, we need to put a resolution and a motion on the floor to add sixteen million dollars for home repair and rehabilitation, simple as that. And on the issue of the students who came here from Palestine calling for a ceasefire, I would be very excited if this council would take up such a far reaching resolution. Nobody's talking about the free monies being sent over there for the war, but we can't get the tabs off the room. Now, this council, unlike the reputation that our city has for social justice, the sit down strike of nineteen thirty seven, the open poverty ordinance of nineteen sixty the sit-down strike of nineteen thirty-seven, the open poverty ordinance of nineteen sixty-eight, these are historic events to advance the human condition. I'm gonna be anxious to see, will you pass a resolution for the ceasefire to advance humanity? Humanity is not your strong suit. Lastly, and I hope I got some seconds left, we need a resolution, thank you. We need a resolution for a special order to investigate the sale of a hundred and ninety properties of our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. From the, from the attorney, you need to investigate that.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Lady, lady, someone special appears to pop up.
Oh, my name is David Gert. I'm just here today on that ARPA money. Do we have the money or not? I know on the last week, uh, Dennis said that the money was gone. So, do we have the money or not? If it's going over to the mayor's spot, well, you know, twenty million is gonna go over to the chip plan. But did anybody ask the county, are they gonna give somebody to it too? Because it don't, it doesn't make sense for that money to go over there to them when it was for, to help the people on their houses. It don't make sense. How are you guys gonna pass something so it goes over to the operating fund? It should go there. And the way they talk it now, the money's been spent already. So if the money's spent or not, because it is, we coming up here for nothing. When the mayor sent seven hundred people down to the dome, to do, not for what? To get a phone number? To get a phone number when they sent the letter to their house, they, all they had to do was tell us to send the phone number. You have out there standing for nothing, for nothing. And all they did is got a phone number from them, and that's, and haven't heard nothing. My uncle went down there, he, he got, he gave them that phone number too, but guess what? It's too late for him, he asked for it. So it's too late for him. So his house is what it is. You know, you guys, I don't, I don't understand y'all when you putting stuff together like this. Now you know, look, well, that money is gonna go over to the operating fund, and then it's gonna be just out to all the, you know, counties that's asking for money. The people are not gonna get nothing because guess what? When, uh, G. Card whoever calls them in, they're gonna have so much money. And then they're gonna go out and say, well, we can't afford to put a whole rock on them, and be, yeah, after. That's just the way it is. So you guys need to really pick it up and find out, you know, stop, you put there forty-five days, like we've been putting over there, you need to stop it. And give the people the money that they need to get their broke down, get, uh, new windows in, you know, size, whatever they need, you need to, you need to vote up trying to get that money to them. Like you said, eight for sixteen million, you gonna send twenty over to the chip plan? Doesn't make sense. County got more money than the city, if you check it out. Check it out and see, and ask the county for money, I'm pretty sure they got shit going over there too.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Uh, I think I'm wrong, go right here.
So my name is Felicity Taylor. I come to the council meetings on nine nine. She says and does for all of us. Burchett's have been at the city hall for ten years, and we're counting, the groundwater is still dead. The water is dead in Flint. If the F.I., the F.I.'s do what you want to do, to change the rules, you're only trying to keep us quiet. Ten years and no clean water, unless hire a parliamentarian. Forward thinking, you F.I.'s remove Mr. May, disenfranchise Board One. And if that can disenfranchise all of the city, that's an error. This raises a dilemma. The F.I.'s can help residents with home repairs, taxes, water bills, furnaces, roofs, hot water heaters, et cetera. Then that will stabilize our community, and then they can talk about repairing the pipes. So the other thing I want to talk about is the review of the open meetings. That you come here and you give out papers, you're just to yourselves, you don't give it to us. That's not part of the open meeting. If I want to know what's on your bill, that's right. I want to be able to respond to what you want to respond to. But you want to put in here only one speaking opportunity per speaker. So all night, you can talk, but we can't. That's the same thing like that city attorney belongs to all of us, not you. That city clerk belongs to all of us, not you. The Flint police belong to all of us, not you. But you keep trying to silence us. New rules, hopefully, three new council people will replace you. The ethics and review board. Um, Flint needs to know today what you are doing. Not about how many ordinances from the vice presidents that comes up here. What have you done with that budget that you have? The whole city wants to know. And honestly, you guys at city hall, you're absolutely amazing. You put up Eurocentric art. You don't think we have black arts in Flint? You don't think we have local arts in Flint? And that's what you want to put up? You're just in our face all the time. You don't stand with us, you don't support us, you don't encourage us, you're always minimizing us. That shouldn't happen, week after week. It's just insulting. It really, and you want, you want to flash the pictures, you want us to see. We could have local artists out there, we could be promoting your own community. But you want the public to come up and talk about that? But you want to minimize how we dress, we get to talk. Three council people can be replaced.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the public? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the public?
Hey, uh, I do this, I, um, wanted to address something that Mr. Murphy said.
Can you, can you speak to that?
I, I, I just wanted to address something that Mr. Murphy said, uh, speak about the audience and things that were going on. Mr. Murphy, uh, if you remember on this side, we had the water crisis. And the water crisis had way more people up in here than what's up in the United States. You remember Tony Caladino got up in Daniel Warren's face? We were going at city council back then, we were going to the government right then. We went out to everybody back then. The only difference, the only difference is that, however, on the other side, they kept it professional. They kept it professional. Up here, it's not kept it professional. The only time, you haven't heard anybody say anything out here, the only time you hear moaning and groaning and everything else is when Dale Lewis doesn't do anything to Councilwoman's word. Doesn't give her money, she breaks the law, she, 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 she does the same thing, Captain Burns or whoever, and she doesn't give her money. The Councilwoman precinct does the same thing. If you keep it professional on that side, it will stay professional on this side. Because like I said before, attitude reflects leadership. And if our leadership isn't moving in the right way, the people won't do it in the right way. The people only ask that you be fair, just go by the rules. That's it. That's all you have to do. If it applies, then you enforce it. But it's no favoritism. I mean, I don't care who it is, it could be my mother, but she's in a position in public setting, I'm a homeowner county. I agree, they had a green, I had a red county over at the border. I mean, public and personal is two different things. Home people accountable evenly, this, this one. Evenly. This is why we're even. Real quick, I heard something in court today, and I didn't know. The mayor cannot do what he pleased in the city hall. Attorney Kim said today in court that, in the ordinance estate, that the mayor shall present a resolution. If I'm not mistaken, Attorney Kim, if you'd like to read that to them, your time, but he, they did not do it.
Thank you.
He did not do it in the last.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Oh shit, you go Kermit. All right now.
Good afternoon, council. Kermit, I answered four. I have one question. Uh, I'll read to them all, Miss Lewis went to the A.E. board, and she said that she was cleaning house. I need some clarity on what is cleaning house, what does that mean? Wow. I think that's enough.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
My name is A.C. Gilman, I live, I don't know if I live in the second ward or if I live in the third ward. According to sector estate, I don't know. If I live in the second ward or third ward. So maybe we can get some clarification where I live. I want to say that it's ludicrous and nonsense to bring seven add-ons. Seven to special affairs, and they have not been there. And we've been talking about that for years. Those add-ons should go to committee. That's where the work is done in the committee. Y'all think it's time until five oh three, but on the agenda, special affairs will get started at four thirty. It's ludicrous, and it's nonsense. Let me say this. I think I know a little about the bit about the council, uh, rules, a little bit, chartering, and Robin's Rules of Order, which cannot call to end the debate unless their debate has taken place. You know what you all do? To stop somebody from getting the floor, and no debate has taken place, you, you call out, let's end the debate. Check the Robin's Rules of Order. I know I'm right. You cannot end debate unless it what? Is debate. Well, some good news about the ninth ward. Good news about the seventh ward. Good news about the second ward. I think it's gonna be a, a change, a gonna come. That the residents finally will get a say about governance. Always remember, it's the government of the people, for the people, and by the people. It's the people's government, it's not your government. And so, so as I go to my seat, remember the seven, seven add-on. This administration is doing what they want, they just, and y'all wonder why the, the residents or something ain't seven of them? Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Uh, I think we'll need the council, oh, sorry, I see her, I see her. Thank you.
I'm Bethany Hatcher. Living in six wards, which is confusing. But I just wanted to say that it's not true that residents can get home repairs here, other cities did that. But you guys refuse to, you just want to put money in your own pocket, you didn't mind voting for yourself for this, or for the others, and all this stuff. If the person on the sand don't say, this is not a democratic city at all. No, when you're living in a republic, the people you vote for are supposed to do the will of the people, and that's not going down. This is, no, you guys are fascists.
My name is Beverly Biggs. Just really, a joke, they always, for fifteen, sixteen days, to say that the people that voted for you are the only ones who recall you. You stopped us in the middle street, and went back over to the pier to play hood, to get signatures. The joke is, to me, you kind of helped us. You really helped us. I went down Trumbull Street yesterday. From Stewart to Fleming Road, every house signed a petition of two or three. I seen Mr. Murphy walk in, I'm like, oh, my goodness, he must have somebody that passed away on that block. And he looked at me like he saw a ghost, I'm not going, I'm out there, I'm gonna get them signatures. So, and I went down, when, uh, when, uh, when you live there, Adele, everybody on your side of the street signed that petition. I tell them, you say you're going to get a job, where? You know, I got, I got almost seventy sheets of petitions that's signed. So shake your head, yeah, if I want to feel much, I do what you want when we get you out. Shake your head, yeah, now. But it's, it's a go-go for you. You know, and, and I, I just, I feel sad for you because you're, you're like little kid. You like eat in a candlestick, you looking for some candy here for your golf. You know, you looking for somebody to give you something, but you guys haven't made these things. The citizen of Flint, a light bulb. You haven't given him a light bulb. I'm not saying I want a light bulb, or I can't afford a light bulb, but you guys took forty million dollars and put it in a general fund. So that tells you what you think about me, that tells you what you think about all of us, the city of Flint. That tells you what you think about the citizens of Flint. And you wonder why we can't get the chambers filled up because you guys are damn rich, they don't want to come down here for your marriage. That's what it is, you guys are perfect. And if you think that you doing something right, you're not, because when you lay your head down at the end of the night, you have the guys that you got to answer to.
Thank you. Participating folks speaking, is there anybody else? All right. One more time, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, that's it, the only one who wanted to counter response, is there anyone who would like to respond to the public? Okay, uh, the chair organized the council in a.
I just want to give my time, to you, your, your clerk, my clerk, to you, clarify what the board wants to do, and the votes, council person, whether that's, so we can, is that what happened when you met?
I've got a chat with this succinctly, obviously. Um, so the state, as people are aware, which is an opinion, but they gave advice to, uh, what they advised the clerk, that council, uh, the twenty twenty census changes were not updated by council until twenty twenty-two. And the council, this council was elected in twenty-one, so that's. So that's, um, invasion, uh, resolution was adopted to change the values. So the opinion of the state is that. For a recall process. Um, and the way that the state recall reads is that. The people basically that voted, these councils, current councilmen are the ones that can sign petitions. And, uh. And that of the change that the council adopted in twenty twenty-two would not take effect until the twenty twenty-two council. So I am following the recommendation advice of this for the electoral elections, the state of Michigan. Because ultimately, as supervisor of elections for the city of Flint, I am to choose the electoral elections for the state of Michigan. It's confusing, I know, and it's gonna be, uh, trying for these may elections. But we are going to work with the state, um, to try to. Follow their direction. So right now, for the, for the subject recall and for.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Um, excuse me, the public. The chair recognizes the councilperson in the third ward.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the speakers who spoke, um, to respond to, um, Arthur's comment, comment. The difference between when I was on this side and, um, the polling side and being a community activist. And you go back and do the research, because I know you got big milk lips and all of that. When I was out there being a community activist, you never heard me tell, uh, an elected official that I would play ads. Excuse my language.
Thank you.
Uh, that's the difference. Since I've been up here, I have been threatened on that. So that's the difference. On, um, the young man that talked about the, um, home improvement and Claire Mancin that spoke on Ashby Capital. You keep repping up here talking about Ashby Capital. Ashby Capital is investing three hundred million dollars on the old Wilton side, the north end of the earth, that has been, um. Down for over, close to thirty years, if not more. Councilman Quincy Murphy support Ashby Capital in the development. So when you come up here and speak, and all due respect, you know I ain't got nothing to love for you. I don't regret supporting Ashby Capital and the work that they did and the money that they invested in the city of Flint. And for the young men that talked about the housing rehab, um, I, I thought about the five million, and if you have the sixteen million. Only close to nine hundred residents will be able to get some home improvement. So if you split it and do a hundred residents in each board, you still ain't gonna be able to make a significant impact. I'm thinking a hundred million needs to be added for home improvement. So add sixteen million, five million, somebody still gonna be dusted out. So I'm not against the sixteen million, I just think we gotta look in ways and how we fund the home improvement.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to respond to the council? Is there anyone else? Yes, the chair recognizes the person in the sixth ward.
Thank you very much, and I apologize, definitely you weren't, I'm not working on a late, uh, backpack. Um, but I want to say, when we look at our council in the district, they vary their personalities. You have the, the chair here from, uh, the office here, she's calling me a little rat, a devil, a demon. And all this time she portrayed as if she had this angelic halo around her head, just not true. I'm going through these seven add-ons, or the, our, we don't have our laws. Our law does not exist, it's switched to the general code. This is a tactic, in my opinion, to trick the Department of Treasury, because we have guidelines. These should not today stay out of, the visible out of, these should stay in the general code. Which means the council obviously got to be on, and then, I put on record last week, there should have these people, so often in here who still go on. We should not be getting this. There, there's no reason why we should be pretending that there's out of, because there isn't. And when we get to it on the call, Mr. Phil, I don't, I don't see him. Or easier, because this was supposed to be changed along with the count number. How can we go on something that does not exist? You know what? It's been transferred. The Department of Treasury is very strict with their guideline, they have categories. But you have five people who will vote anything through, and they'll pass with absolutely no problem. No problem at all. Not many of these are, they have time to correct me. I mean, these, uh, out of the seven wars, they out of the, which means they came today. And last week, the week before, we took, they, the five of them voted to remove our guideline, December eighteenth.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address? Is there anyone else who wishes to, uh, speak their public speaking? The chair recognizes the councilperson in the second ward.
Thank you. So, um, grateful for those that came to participate in this, um, as stated, and with the line spoken. Yes, it's my goal to clean up this abused behavior where people are yelling out and getting threatened. That is one of my goals, to clean that up, because this is a place where everyone should feel safe. This is a place where you shouldn't worry about others attempting to threaten to do things to you, to counsel people. Harassing you, threatening to do things to you, this is not the place for that. So I stand on my word, and I will continue to stand on my word, and so that's what's gonna happen. And so I just wanna also address this too. It's kind of funny that individuals that's calling me a crook and saying that I'm not right. That we heard. But. That's part of this role that we talked about, you should not be allowed, and that's when you weaponize police against yourself to get removed. So we just need for individuals to be in order. I'm going back to my point. When I look at the constituent in the third ward that's talking about the second ward councilperson. Second ward councilperson was not ordered to pay twenty-five thousand dollars for full Santa Claus. So we must be very, very, we must be very careful when we begin to talk about being crook. And when we start talking about being charged with, because that's serious. Okay, thank you for that was a proper call, boy.
I, I, I have to say.
Yeah, but, but, but at the end, at the beginning of the day, this is documented. If I have to like anything in your window, please, put it forward.
What's, what's your point? Okay, I'm sorry, where, man, would you all please make sure that you, um, not, you know, appear? Thank you. Continue.
Thank you, but just about that, club, someone that's calling you crook, you must make sure that they're not a felon themselves. So I do them first, so that's clean up.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the public? Is there anyone else who would like to speak their public speaking? All right, same as how there is no one else. I will go ahead and take my time. I want to, uh, thank everyone for showing up, including my colleagues in the sixth ward who showed up and decided to break, um, professional arguments to avoid being abbreviated.
Damn, they ain't tripping these.
Also, uh, someone who is absolutely correct to the audience, this meeting does start at four thirty. More than one of my colleagues was disrespectful to the residents' time. This meeting starts at four thirty. We all need to be mindful and be on time, if we're not sick or having, uh, here, here. We need to be on time. I also want to, um, say another thing about lies we were talking, they were correct. Y'all are perfectly seven add-ons. Into this committee that should have been other committees, that is also correct. Those are two things that are absolutely factual, was needed, was supposed to start at four thirty, it did not. And we have seven add-ons that should have started in another committee. I, I know two of them did start in other committees. And I, I understand the reason why they aren't here in special affairs, but we need to be mindful to use the committees for what they are for. Finally. Um, we keep talking about the general fund and somebody, and I believe this was a legit question, so I'm gonna give you an answer, and this, this is resolution two-three-zero-four-six-four-point-one. Two-three-zero-four-six-four-point-one, which was adopted on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It is further resolved that forty million, five hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred nineteen thousand, eighty-five cents is transferred, uh, to, uh, for revenue replacement in the general fund. It's further resolved that the city will use these funds with the approval of the city council. For the following specific programs, neighborhood improvements, economic development, public safety, public health, infrastructure administration, revenue replacement, and contingency. Uh, it also says that any expenditure for reallocations we fund shall be made according to the plan approved by city council and all efforts such as finishers. Or reallocations have been specifically authorized, that is my time. Um, I do want to now into the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda in separate? The chair recognizes the councilperson in the third ward.
The motion was six million. For being separations.
All right, is there any other separate?
Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes the councilperson in the fourth ward.
I'd like to separate two-three-zero-three-one-nine.
What's your point? Is this too late for me to recite my motion, because what I usually do is when I, um, do a motion for a second reading, I vote down the resolution. The number, um, number and the, um, title of the resolution, just for, um. But if you're, I just wanted to, man, resolutions for.
We can continue, I just ask, um, uh, I'll ask, uh, colleagues that as they meet up when they're separating, they need the number and the, the title of the resolution. All right, thank you, continue, four-four.
Madam Chair, that resolution two-three-zero-three-one-nine is a resolution for, uh, the council, since James McKenna can't live there. And responding to the effects of pandemic and lightning and war, um, and, uh. Now, I believe that is all, because I suspect that some other councilors have others to separate with that one.
All right, thank you. Are there any other separate?
Yes.
The chair recognizes the councilperson in the ward.
Separate. Resolution two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero, assistance of the city's residents' corporation and possible vacation. I also would like to separate the two add-ons. Add-on number six, the resolution will mention the contract with priority waste company to honor Marley King.
What the hell, this is gone. Marley King, that thing that matters.
That you wanted to separate?
Is that for next year? I don't know, maybe they doing it because it's Sunday.
The chair recognizes the councilperson in the sixth ward.
Two-three-zero-four-six-six, I have to separate. Two-three-zero-four-six-six. Two-three-zero, two.
Three.
Two-four-zero, zero-zero-seven. Block, safety, public safety cameras. Two-four-zero-zero-one-two. County attorney for the council.
All right, is there any more separate? Yes, the chair recognizes the councilperson in the ward. Is there anyone else? I think it is, it's over.
Separate two-three-zero-four. Two-three-zero-four-seven-nine. Two-three, two-four-zero.
What'd he say?
Okay, if there are no more separate, then consent agenda, well. Two-four-zero-zero-one-zero, chair of the gaming license pack for the rest. Two-four-zero-zero-one-five, surrendering the house community to recovery support services expansion. Two-four-zero-zero-one-one, appointment for appointment to the board of review. Yes.
Separate two-four-zero-zero-one-five, surrendering house.
All right, so let's start over, the consent agenda will include. Two-four-zero-zero-one-zero, chair of the gaming license pack for the rest. Two-four-zero-zero-one-one, reappointment, uh, to board of review. Uh, two-four-zero-zero-one, reappointment of board of review. And resolution add-on one and five, roll call, ma'am clerk.
What is the add-on?
I'm going for a resolution seven.
Oh, yeah, one-five-eight-seven, thank you, that's, that's, that's in the consent agenda, thank you, sorry about that. Uh, roll call, ma'am clerk.
What is the add-on resolution, explain, God. We don't even know what they both know.
Mr. Ray, this is asking, this is.
Yes.
Yes.
Is Kristen, yes. Is Burns?
Yes.
Yes. The vote is seven, yes, zero now.
Madam Chair.
Uh, the chair recognizes the councilperson in the ward.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend two-three-zero-three-one-nine, the James McKenna family rights card to appropriate account number. Who should get it, the headband rating is one-one-seven-two-nine-zero-zero-two-eight-zero-one-zero-zero-zero.
All right, so you're making this two-two, two-three-zero-three-one-nine point one?
Yes.
We don't have any of the add-on resolutions, um, people, so we don't know what they're voting on when it comes to the add-on.
One, one, seven-two-nine, zero-zero-two, eight-four-one, zero-zero-zero.
Okay, so, there's minimal, you mentioned two-three-zero-three-one-nine, yeah, yes, what's your point?
One of the girls is trying to be different, but the bottom line, we post from the bottom, we don't need to add on.
Yes, I do.
None of the seven add-ons, we don't even got nothing.
We got one.
That's that then that's gotta be some type of violation.
The only thing that has changed on this is the.
What did they do?
I think I said the add-on resolutions, but we don't know what they are.
I actually directed the resolution from our agenda of managing to.
All right, so we're starting this point on because of the town. Okay, it's.
So like my motion was to amend two three zero three one nine for account number only and the account number is one, seven two nine, zero zero two, eight oh one, zero zero three.
All right, just a second. Hold on a second. Okay, it's been probably so put out into the town, probably the eight. Where are these?
Man, chair.
The chair recognizes the council person in the fourth.
Yeah, the reason why I'm naming this is just for the count number, but also this this is controlling around since September, and it's time that we do this. Um the first part is we all know they need help in hand as well as all throughout the city and life, and um so I'm I'm removed, I would like to see this approved.
I think I named it.
Thank you, Zariah, I'll speak about it. The chair recognizes the council person in the eighth floor.
So, uh, Mr. Tom Moore, through you, the chair says before the motion.
Mr. Moore, please translate.
He didn't put on his jacket today, but he got that same shirt, tie, and pants on.
Mr. Moore, can you explain the account number discrepancy in that, where did I separated a few pieces? Now, we're at one one one, seven two nine, does not the account that we transferred to in this law, he said that that the registration wasn't to transfer to a different account in forty-five days, and now we're on one one one, seven two nine, so how's that happen?
That's um probably a resolution that the change that we had, so with the forty-five days and eight, the reserve account in the general fund, that's the guy.
I'm sorry, can you send me?
The one of the amendments that was made by that council was that with forty-five days, I need move it to a reserve account within the general fund.
No, they didn't. He said it was moved automatically.
One one one, seven two nine is the reserve account.
Right.
But then last week, it was a different account.
Yeah, we hadn't moved it because you know, it's a two-step process.
Yeah.
And so we made it last week, we hadn't moved yet, now we moved it, and she got you know, four.
So, and the resolve is that it still says it's coming from our front two eighty-seven, should we strike that from the record?
Well, which one?
At the bottom, it says the resolve.
The resolve, I assume the two eighty-seven, that's the two. Coming through you, two. It says that for the city of the flex art administration, that we're talking, it says funds will be paid from the American Rescue Plan at Fund two eighty-seven.
He the CFO, Lord Jesus help his Lord.
I think this first three, maybe a little.
Well, how come the CFO?
Anything that was presented before December thirty-first still has the two eighty-seven numbers, but this one was back in September, anything going forward would just have the one one.
You got the. So, this has a one one number and it's saying that it's going to be paid through two eighty-seven, so.
The. I apologize, uh there were, uh when I received the draft uh agenda this morning, I saw this was from the September uh.
But I get that, it doesn't really matter when the the amendment or the resolution was dropped forward, if it is approved tonight, should we strike that two eighty-seven?
There's a should be a uh a new resolution that breaks that.
You're not fair enough.
What's your point? Oh, he has the.
Through you to um Mr. Pfeifer, um the account numbers were different, and it looks like the wording might have been a little different, so I just didn't read, you know, did the um, I didn't catch the two eighty-seven there, but I can strike that. Yeah, no problem. But I, do you want to rewrite it because I've added here and I can print it right now?
Some of them got to write this.
As long as you, I just want, that's my own problem, that we just got the one that is sent, and they're still kind of reading it, so we have to leave, I guess, I know, that's the one, it's the one that you just said.
I think, I think that this is, this is to, I think one of these is the last one that came in, that we um that's got the one.
All the top ones can't look correct.
I'll make the uh motion to the man to strike the seventh funds will be paid from the American Rescue Plan at Fund two eighty-seven. Well, I guess before I do that, is Ernst &amp; Young, after we have called it, who's in charge?
They still, they have some review of what this extension was, what they had pretty soon, they're still be involved in the process.
So, should the whole last half of that sentence be strictly stricted?
He don't know, he don't leave him alone.
We're still basically following the uh ARPA guidelines for everything, but our class, but the power.
Okay, well, let's start with, I'll make my motion to be to strike the seventh funds will be paid from the American Rescue Plan at Fund two eighty-seven.
That's where he got the one.
There he is, he didn't go count. What's in writing, sir?
This is, this is still one point one.
So, I'll move on to the next one, but can we do the strike? Is that my time is on now? Before this funds are spent, city, our administration compliance and implementation firm shall review and ensure compliance with the latest U.S. Department of Treasury fund. I understand that you may be consulting with them, but that's purely voluntary, at this point, should that be restricted on this resolution? Hello? If you want to, man, chair, Mr..
That was the one I wasn't speaking.
Our plan is to follow the ARPA guidelines, you know, but that's voluntary, there's a policy.
Whoa.
He done used his job as well.
Okay, you went up, I need some weird peoples. Um, this burns. You go ahead and dissolve base.
Mr. Mitchell, come to order. Thank you.
I struggle with this because we don't have a revised plan with Ernst &amp; Young to not administer funds of not part of the two eighty-seven, and through the department. We don't have a plan with Ernst &amp; Young to administer compliance for funds that are not associated no longer with ARPA officially. I understand that what we planned or what we want to do, but they don't have agreement with us to administer guidelines for things in the general fund following, so, so why are we, should we strike that before we have a plan with Ernst &amp; Young to do this voluntary?
So, I I guess, Mr. Pfeifer, if I am, I apologize for time, um because of all of the, the ones that are in front of us now, because these are ones that are being bought back, they were already vetted through Ernst &amp; Young.
That's correct, but this says compliance and implementation, not just the initial. So, since we don't have an agreement with Ernst &amp; Young for um funds in the general fund, should we strike this until we get a plan with Ernst &amp; Young for this bond here? It makes us all.
I understand what you're saying.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Uh, it's just because our contract with Ernst &amp; Young is for ARPA funds.
That's right.
But these are no longer ARPA funds, they're in the general fund.
She can't help it.
We want to uh self-propose rules to these, but they're no longer ARPA funds, so they don't longer have a contract to implement any process within the general fund.
Right.
I think, but, but we have a contract with them to, to do this stuff for ARPA funds.
We have a new contract, you have to include that.
But that's not the force of that.
Wait a minute.
Not the force of that.
All right, I'll ask, uh, the chair recognizes the council person in the third floor.
Um, I want to support um this amendment, and the reason why I want to support this amendment is because these are still ARPA funds. My colleagues in September were grant stipulations, the ARPA plan, and what was in the resolution that still deal and speaks specifically to the ARPA funds. If ARPA language is not in there, then I won't be supporting that, we have to get from somewhere else, because we approve the plan for ARPA funds. Now, this account for the two eighty-seven, I support striking that, but I'm not really supporting striking the sentence in a mass law, I mean, you know, my colleague got a right foot stepping and supporting this motion, but I won't be supporting that because that's going to send messages out there to the community that um the ARPA funds is um in the general fund account, and we striking, and we not following the ARPA plan that we already set in place, that we voted for last year sometime whenever we voted for. So, I won't be supporting anything that says striking ARPA dollars and with the finance committee in the um, I mean, the finance director and the um, the finance firm, which I would never have loved with, if they telling y'all, y'all, y'all got to strike that language ARPA funds because it's going in the general fund, I'm thinking if we move the ARPA funds into the general funds, but it's still restricted to ARPA related activities that we already approved, or if this unspent ARPA dollars, we still have the um ability to change where we want to move some money, so we can still do the same thing that we did hard into us moving it in the general fund. And we keep talking about striking the language ARPA, that makes the public believe that we got to come up with a whole new plan, and then that's going to send people in chaos. So, this council is very important, um dropping the language that has something to do with um ARPA related activities, because in my mind, what I voted for was that we was just moving ARPA funds into the general fund account, it's still restricted, just like we get grant dollars, and those grant dollars are um specifically for, for instance, community developed block grant dollars, are restricted for community developed block grant activities. So, I'm not wanting to turn around and start messing people up already, that we are, this this, the whole ARPA situation already jacked up. So, to turn around and tell this public that the ARPA funds is not going to go towards what we already voted for is misleading, and I won't be supporting that. I will support the two eighty-sevens, but then we went down the line and said voting to take away ARPA, we lost the chance, so we lost the vote on that. I won't pay anything to two eighty-seven, I won't vote to, so my vote is no.
Is there anyone else who'd like to run this meeting?
Man, chair.
Okay, the chair recognizes the council person in the sixth floor.
I have another important question. One, we have a forty-five day voting period, we need to wait for that forty-five day is up before we know who's running. And money is already being spent, but we're still being adjusted, we said ours, and it's not only the past, because he said, he said, you know, if we're going to pass this stuff, I mean, it was clear, I think, a couple minutes ago, that everyone wanted to have ARPA all in, be specific, and then we're adjusting account numbers, I think it was in two or three months just today, you know, and we're adding on, and we need to strike, so what that says is it's not ready, it's not ready to be actually presented to us, because there may be amendments on the floor, and this is the second one to, is it the second one we got today, or we lost track? But I think that's a cop to us, you know, here and ready, and that's, that's uh, that we are, we're just person, and then also have, we say the um, the council, I just think it's voluntary, um Ernst &amp; Young, it's kind of putting resolutions before we get the contract, and so we said that resolution is before us today, so this one is not going to be before us, it has been before you, it has, and a couple of times, and so it was not approved, nothing, okay, well, you never said that, I mean, we got to. Okay, so why do we have to stand? We don't make difference. So, um, this is my other agenda, I guess I'm going to um, the head, I'm going to address.
Fifty minutes now, first one, this is true, what's that?
So, I'm not going to, but I'm here um, step off, I understand, we could look at the news, communities that did not still have ARPA, and we moved fourteen million over to the general fund. I would prefer us to leave that one here, and you know, when we get stated that we need a forty-five day voting period.
I don't think, the forty-five day, the day come for me, when I came from the council, I did say you have to get a two-step process.
A two-step, we have those two steps.
And we did follow what the uh resolution that was passed by the county, which I'd say we had to do that within forty-five days.
Within forty-five days, like I completely said too, we didn't want to make it look like we were taking money directly from ARPA over to this general fund, it takes off to ARPA digestives, so I guess I'm bitter, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm too tired to go back, so I'm just, I just think we're stripping these up, we need to make sure that we don't have to like all of them presented to someone, and then we just redo on the document, and Julia said she, you know, she didn't recall before, this shouldn't have done before, past me, and I don't want to make it like you want to make it, I didn't do it on the floor, it didn't have to be, well, here's all I ask a question, so it's got to be, because we just want to follow the guideline, and we still consider ARPA, because I'm, so what do you guys consider, I mean, how would you like it to be called? You want it to be called ARPA, or you want ARPA, I think that, I, I.
The camera, wait.
So, what I think is do it through an email, and let each council person respond to it. My company love is have a correct account number, if it's.
This is another one, first one, this is what you mentioned.
So, I'm not going to, but I'm here, um, step off. I understand we could look at news, communities that did not still have, um, direct. And we moved forty million over to the general fund. I would prefer us to leave that one here, and you know, when we have stated that we need a forty-five day voting period.
I don't think, the forty-five day, the day come for me, when I came from the council, I did say you have to get a two-step process.
A two-step, well, those two steps.
And we did follow what the, uh, resolution that was passed by the council. But I'd say we had to do that within forty-five days.
Within forty-five days, and what I completely said too, we didn't want to make it look like we were taking money directly from ARPA over to this, the general fund. It came off to ARPA guidance. So, I guess I'll admit it, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm too tired to go back. I just think we're stripping these up, and we need to make sure that we don't have to like all the things that they did see one. And then we just review on the document, and Julia said she, you know, she didn't recall before, this shouldn't have done before past me. And I don't want to make it like you want to make it like this on the floor. It doesn't appropriate, and we did present it, but we didn't. Well, here's all I ask a question. So, it's kind of confusing, because we just want to have a guideline. And we still consider ARPA, because I'm asking, so what do you guys consider? I mean, how would you like it to be called? Do you want it to be called ARPA? Or do you want ARPA? I think that, I, I thought. So, what I think is do it through an email, and let each council person respond to it. My government love is having correct account number, if it's coming out of general fund. I understand it was out here before ARPA, but it's not ARPA anymore, so then we need to make the changes. We did, we did make that withdrawal before while it was ARPA, within that timeline. And if you don't, it's not ARPA, it's just not. So, as to me, it's kind of like you're trying to sell a two thousand twenty-three, uh, vehicle in two thousand twenty-four. It's still in two thousand twenty-three, and you have to make some changes. Now, I got all these changes up here, and I mean, and then you're looking at the account numbers, and it's ARPA? Whatever we call it, we still follow the ARPA guidance. This is not, you know, you know, though, that's, that's why this is general fund, it's keeping general fund. We don't need to know it's a general fund, I mean, if it's general fund, we don't spend general fund like with ARPA.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? The chair recognizes the council person in the ninth floor. I don't know how we can continue as a pastor, I'm not going to get done with ARPA funds, these are the funds, because there still are the funds. Um, they're still coming out of that, uh, account for the out-eating purposes. Uh, and if we don't want to call it ARPA, then we can't even make simple decisions. And so, nothing will get done. Uh, is there anything you'd like to add based on what I said, um, before? Because I've heard a lot, uh, accusations, but I didn't really understand.
Well, we're just trying to follow what the council gave us in the first place about we might be going to steal ARPA dollars, we still have to follow the ARPA guideline. Now, it's.
What a sea of folk it has in there.
But I'm hearing different sides, that if she wanted to be ARPA, she doesn't want to be ARPA anymore. So, what, how do we get it passed?
Exactly. I think for some, it might be that it's just.
The council person in the ninth floor does not speak to the motives of council people to say that this is it, or everybody's going.
She, she didn't say anybody's name specifically, just let me, let's watch it. Go ahead. Thank you. Um, there's lots of things that, by the council people, um, in fact, they can't decide themselves. So, it's a convenient political ploy, uh, to not call it that. But there are still ARPA funds, and there are, there's really no issue, it's created. And so, I'm going to vote yes. I don't know what's going to happen, but you can't let someone understand. Thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Anybody else who wishes to speak? All right, I don't want to take my time. I do want to go back to, because I know that there is some confusion, you're asking what should be called, like, what is it? Uh, the resolution that was passed on the December twentieth, that's resolution two-three-zero-four-six-four-point-one, still call these ARPA funds, because they are ARPA funds. We're not going to call them anything other than ARPA funds, because what happens, once we start calling it general fund money, then we void the resolution. And the resolution says that this forty million has to come before the council for those categories. So, it's not general fund money, we will not refer to it as general fund money, it is ARPA money. And that is to come before the council in the categories for us to go on. That's what the resolution says. If you have any confusion about what you're supposed to use or call it, go back to the resolution that was adopted on the twentieth of December. This is ARPA funds under council control. That's what this is.
Why they put it in the general fund? Why they put it in the general fund?
All right. Thank you. Um, Pastor, can you remind everyone, and I, I'm sorry. Pastor, can you remind everyone what this amended, amended motion is on?
Mr. Pfeiffer's motion or the total?
Um, so he had a second motion that he put forward.
So, his motion was to, um, for the management of the Blackberry, that the funds will be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act two eighty-seven.
All right. And that is the motion that we will be voting on just to strike funds will be paid from, from the American Rescue Plan Act two eighty-seven. That's the only thing I'm voting on, still. I just want to make sure that he has clarity on what we're voting on right now.
We don't.
Okay, I still don't believe it's general fund. I mean, if the administration has the power, they have the money, and it's under seventy-five thousand, y'all don't have to bring it over that new charter. I mean, I mean, I mean, we can't have, we have everything away. You know, we, we, we make it up to the rules, we add, you know, the charter state. We all know that, that seventy-five thousand dollar threshold exists. You know, and this has been out there, the administration wants to go ahead and prove it, they did. I mean, everything doesn't come before us, like in a professional contract. And we should have lowered that seventy-five thousand dollar threshold to make it be, you know, when I think it's like thirty-five thousand, or when it used to be free, but it changed dollars. I don't have my cap too much. But I think that, for me, we're not good enough. Our society, like, they're doing it publicly to community. This is general fund now. And I, I think the money's being spent on these. Am I correct? Uh, Mr. Er, Mr. Moore said it was being spent on.
The money's going to stay with council progression.
So everything that has been, uh, moved over that forty million has all been, every penny has been approved by council that has been spent.
That's correct.
Hmm, okay. But it's in general fund, and within forty-five days of December, we got a holding period. That's when it goes into that restrictive?
We, we had to take a two-step.
The two-step process?
Oh, we did that, we did that. And, uh, uh, when we knew that there was a desire to start spending the ARPA dollars for five or ten was blocked off previously, we made it so that you can't start acting on top. We just had to take the two-step process.
It never, it never, it never.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Uh, the chair recognizes the council person in the third and then nine. Councilmember?
Yes. Um, let me clarify this stuff with the public. Because my colleagues seem to keep using these wordsmiths to make people believe that this is not our funds or related activities. Once again, let me, because I, I, I think it's so important that we make sure we put out good information and the truth. The truth is, there are ARPA dollars that came into the city in the ninety-fourth year. The city council approved an itemized budget category back in whenever we did it. My colleagues keep putting out to the public that this is general funds, even though it wasn't even called general funds, but it's still restricted. Restricted, let me say that one more time. Restricted to ARPA activities only.
He changed his mind that quick.
So you can't take general fund money and go and take a trip on the Bahamas, or go and, um, give the mayor's office an additional budget so he can get additional staff or another department. It's restricted to the different categories. I think we did, and I'll give you guys an example. We did sixteen million for the Genesee County land bank to the lot of its homes. This was restricted to very little, that's what we voted on. These funds, even though it's going into general funds, is still restricted to those funding categories that we need to go in. And I want to thank my colleagues for clarifying the two-eighty-seven funds, because, um, that sentence says the funds will be paid from the American rest payment back from two-eighty-seven period. And then, so, that right here, at the end of the sentence, I thought we were striking this sentence that, um, says, at the, um, last ending, that ensure compliance with the latest U.S. Department of Treasury final rules that deals with the ARPA, the city of Platte's ARPA administration compliance. So the language is still in there, so I can support openness to council, because those ARPA, that ARPA language is still added, it's in here twice. I thought we was just, uh, getting rid of it completely. What I'm against is, if we have resolutions, and we have to, um, take out ARPA funds because my colleagues keep telling the public that these are not ARPA funds, and they are, and they still gotta come before city council to get approved. General fund dollars that was already approved, you guys can spend, because we approved that back in July sometime, when we approved the annual gen, um, general fund budget, so you guys can spend on that. When it comes down to ARPA dollars, you can spend what we already approved, but you can't just spend just because you can spend it. And it's just so unfortunate that my colleagues keep telling people that this is not ARPA funds no more. Yes, it is. It is ARPA funds, you still gotta go with the compliance of ARPA funds. It's still related to ARPA funds activity. It's still restricted to, um, ARPA activities. So I'm telling y'all, don't say our political thinkers that can think for themselves, and don't have to, um, go based on what two or three statements is saying. It ain't what council member says, it's what I know we voted on. My colleague in the second ward, and, um, I don't know if you'll get the floor, but if you could read that again for the public, so they can be educated on what we voted on, she just clearly read, uh, the resolution that said it's restricted to ARPA activities. And then, even once she read it, my colleagues still keep saying it ain't ARPA funds. Y'all better start thinking for yourselves, and read what's in black and white, and not what somebody else's.
All right, thank you. And he just changed his damn mind.
The floor, I think the chair recognizes the council person in the ninth.
I just wanted to clarify this, so we can stop talking about it, um, to execute for me. Can the administration legally use the ARPA funds or anything other than the ARPA?
Uh, the administration can't use these funds or anything that council doesn't approve.
We knew he was gonna say that.
And so we still, the process still remains, and, uh, we have to operate in the manner that we can be approved or disapproved, because if we don't, then we're gonna lose all our money, because it has to be allocated by a certain time. Get us. Okay, this is my, uh, my floor.
Okay.
Let's go ahead if you have. Um, it absolutely has to be allocated by a certain time. Uh, who can answer that or confirm that, or Ms. Park?
Whoever just came.
Okay, so it has to be out there badly by the end of December twenty twenty-four and spent by December twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. This has been well known since it began, so I don't know why my colleagues are confused on that, but we have until December, and it'll snow in turn of case that this council works. It'll take us some time to get anything done. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to go? Anyone else? Okay, the chair recognizes the council person in the second ward.
We got it, we agreed, but you all spoke about that.
Thank you.
So I would like to know, is anyone here to represent the Kennedy Life Center?
Uh, so, so.
I'm here to represent the Kennedy Life Center, my name is Dennis Burnett. Unfortunately, the pastor and grand writer couldn't make it, so I don't have all the answers if I'm asking you. But I was trying to, um, just follow up on what.
Sir, I didn't ask you.
Okay.
Damn.
Good sir.
Okay, go ahead.
She's saying quit talking. Can you check the shit on it again?
We have been sticking with this resolution for quite some time. And also, we had Pastor Reed come down here, um, and he was fighting for this resolution as well. And, um, thank you for coming, um, in Pastor Reed's access. And so, um, are you, are you a member of the Kennedy Life Center?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, so my knowledge, the, the goal of the Kennedy Center campus, you are against a help of the revitalized the first ward, assist with snow removal, things of that nature, because that's what I, I read and proposed, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, thank you. And so, with that being said, it's important for us to realize that, uh, there's no need for us to play with people's lives based off some word. Let's go ahead, and let's pass, because they've been waiting for months. They are, um, a part of the last few people that we're trying to allocate life funds for. They applied, they're aware, they were approved. So why are we holding up their money because of semantics? I want to see the Kennedy Life Center receive this money. They are taking their time out to come to represent the Kennedy Life Center. And their goal is to do snow mitigation, long night. If we would have gave their money when they just got it, they could be in full effect. Tomorrow, we're in a big snowstorm. So let's go ahead, and thank you, sir, you can have a seat, because all I want to do is to hear. Um, yeah, we, we should go ahead and allocate this money, we have more than enough in this specific category, and this is to benefit the North Side, specifically the first ward. Let's not wait, let's not make a, a conversation on, um, our, being said a few times here, this is our money, we're calling, but it is, it's going to be spent, it's constantly going, period. So I, I don't like to try to sway narratives, there's no narrative to sway. This council controls those dollars, this council controls the dollars. And then our finance chair is doing a fantastic job making sure that we stay on the ARPA budget and receive what grants are coming out. So let's not act like we don't know, we know what this is. And we're not. Well, I, I can speak for the second ward. I'm not waiting when people can give them money to do some great things with plans. I'm looking to complete this black category, and then I'm also looking to complete debt financing, and then I'm looking to move on to other categories, so people will know where they stand. I want, um, so when we start talking about the Ernst Miel category, um, excuse me, where the looks that come up, it's important for my colleagues to realize that Ernst Miel, I, I support them if they support what we're doing, but we need to make sure that they are notifying individuals that have received from funding, and we need to make sure that they notify individuals that have not, or that will not receive from it. We need to make sure that everyone is doing their job, because it's only fair. Misinformation is death of bad news information, and unfortunately, people are receiving no information. And hopefully, as this family approved these funds, we will be able to release them. I don't really think about forty-five days, maybe I missed that, but these funds should be released immediately, so they can go to the community. We have these funds since May twenty twenty-one, why are we waiting? So with that being said, I support, I support sending this to council, so we can move on to the next thing, and spend our money.
Thank you, thank you. Um, the only person, like I said to myself, is my colleague in the fourth, if you'd like to take your time.
I will, I'll take part of that one. And, um, you know, as Dr. Lewis said, and our committee is fed up, because we have been trying to produce resolutions through, but when I said it last Wednesday, we have gone through, we have begged people and the administration to send the resolutions up. We have emailed them saying, let the, um, people who are not being awarded funds know that they're not getting the money. Tell them when their resolutions are coming before council, so they can be here if there are any questions. And I also said, um, resolutions, as Dr. Lewis said, in my hands on Wednesday, because if they're not in my hands up for Wednesday, I'll be preparing for the following to go to finance, because we're gonna get this done. We're tired of it. We want to be able to see where we're at, at the end, so that we can move money around. But we can't do that until all those community grants are awarded.
And he gave us one.
Um, I am definitely gonna support this, the first ward deserves this.
Oh, they fight for the first.
And, um, having to hang around for four months is the greatest to know. Thank you.
Thank you. And because you're the last person to vote, and you take my time, I just want to ask everybody the resolution two-three-zero, for states four-one-one, which was adopted in September twenty twenty-three, and this was, uh, was the issue, allocating ARPA funds for revenue replacement. We go down to the bottom, it says it is resolved that the Flint City Council has the ARPA allocation plan listed below, as its plan for allocating the remaining four million five hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars dating by December of the city's remaining ARPA funding. Uh, pay attention, we're still agreeing to this is ARPA funding, saying it's the allocation for ARPA funding, so we're still sticking to this man allocation plan. It's further resolved that that money will be transferred, that the city will use the funds with the approval of the city council for the following specific programs. Neighborhood improvements, economic development, public safety, public health, infrastructure, administration, revenue replacement, and contingency. Uh, it's further resolved that prior to any award expenditure or reallocation of these funds occurring after the effective date of this resolution, city council must, not may, not might, not probably should, must authorize, ideally adopt a resolution, the specific award expenditure or reallocation. Any expenditures or reallocations of these funds shall be made according to the plan approved by city council, and only after such expenditures or reallocations have been specifically authorized by resolution of the city council. So again, that the funds may be, shall be made according to the plan approved, meaning when you're asking about the compliance and everything, all that owes need to this resolution, it is covered. The administration cannot move any part of that money in any way, shape, or form without council approval, that would be doing something completely illegal, and not only that, but now you have nine people who are upset, saying the same thing about you. So I believe the administration understands it, it's in their best interest to honor what was adopted. This is ARPA funding, um, the ARPA allocation plan for the ARPA dollars, um, in, in the ARPA categories that they're supposed to be spent. This is ARPA money, this is not general fund money, this is ARPA money, this is not general fund money, this is ARPA money, this is ARPA money, this is ARPA money, this is ARPA money. No amount of anything that's being said or quoted about the general fund will change the resolution, what this resolution said, what was adopted, this is ARPA money, to be allocated by the council for the categories, this is ARPA money, ARPA money. With that said, I think I am done, over my time. I wrote a phone call. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Yep, I'm sorry, you're correct. You're correct. Anybody else in the second round? Councilmember?
Uh, so we want to talk about, now, first of all, the first ward does deserve this. First ward also deserves representation. So we can't sit up here and pretend that we know what's right for the first ward, the first ward. Let's talk about that, but, so, y'all, if we're talking, and, and we talked about misinformation, Mrs. Park's green, I'm surprised that he came up here and spewed lies, because he did. This money has already been allocated, there is no longer any dates. Let me say that again, there's no longer the December twenty twenty-four to be allocated, it's already been allocated after revenue replacement. So they said, oh, it's gotta be, it's gotta be allocated, it's straight lies. It's already been allocated, they did that with a four million dollar transfer.
Thank you.
So don't, don't hear this first thing, if you show me where the ARPA allocation dates were all lied, because they dumped.
People would be saying it's three, there.
As you read, I heard Dr. Green.
It did not say the date.
We're still following the same guidelines as ARPA.
That is voluntary, that is voluntary, so we don't get allocated by.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They move the money because of, because of the deadline for December twenty twenty-third, so that you get, so that the city could receive the, um, bonus that you get. But the money is still following the ARPA guidelines, and I'm not gonna say it needs to be last.
It is not voluntary, it's voluntary.
I don't care if it's voluntary, whatever it is, it's gonna follow the guidelines.
There is no date that the Department of Treasury is implementing on this.
I can't argue with you about that, I'll say it, we follow the guidelines, so I don't know.
Where is the CFO?
They haven't been allocated.
There you go.
Sorry?
Thank you, miss.
Here we go.
It, we could call these, now, I'm done, I'm sorry, I know I've been. They, um, we could call these ARPA, call them the ARPA amount, but just like we do with three other things, we have a fund within the general fund, and we call those, uh, police funds, or whatever other funds, but they no longer follow the ARPA guidelines or treasury, is no longer going to, uh, request any compliance. Once they got transferred over and they approved them out for these, uh, revenue replacement, it stops there. They are not going to, the general fund is not going to get funded by the Department of Treasury. It's not gonna happen. So say that these are still following ARPA guidelines, that's fine with them if you want to do that, but that's voluntary. So there is no date, the ARPA guidelines, no matter what they say up here, show me in writing that the ARPA guy, or that this ARPA fund, in the general fund, is by law through the treasury that I'm going to be implementing, that's not, they can't. They just come up here and spew lies.
Is there anyone else who would like to, uh, speak in the second round?
The chairman.
The chair recognizes the council person in the sixth ward.
I agree with the council member, that this year, and it is volunteer. And you act as something lying, and that's deliberate, because it does not exist. And so when it comes to being critical thinkers, I don't know some of you, when you're thinking or speaking for me, or none of that, none of it. When we talk about moving this money, that first ward deserves something. I mean, they're, they not trying to do anything, but they also deserve some representation, this council member stated, there is no representation for this ward, and they also take signatures up here. They will sue, I just want to sit here and have all eyes about me, you know, I hold on, I ain't calling nobody with which, sure didn't. But this, this stuff that y'all do, because when we talk about who does have money, and this white category, but it rushing to get it through, Cyrus Park, white category, they don't choose to name no category. She's fifty thousand dollars.
We knew that was coming.
Sorry, excuse me, what's your question?
My request and information is, she keeps saying that my name is on it, and I spit something, what, where is that proven? Our company corporation, I showed it, you seen it, and stopped, you was the record and the president, you moved after we found out. Uh, August two thousand twenty-one, you originated Cyrus Park, you did. Your name is on it. Now, you didn't see this, although, don't, don't do that, I mean, the use of you lying and making a point. All of you gonna find out. How did the council not know, and she was the asshole, her and Julie? How did we not know that Cyrus Park was getting fifty thousand dollars? How did we not know? And so we could sit right and ask Julie, don't look surprised, because I'm not sure if it's bigger stuff with you. You told me right here, I didn't know Tanya until I just saw it today. The Cyrus Park is getting fifty thousand. Our president and vice president, Cash for Shat, is getting out of the store. So we love it, I love it, they always argue. I mean, they, their resolutions made here to be approved before your church did, see how you doing this part of that? Theirs made here before our church, before the people. So when we look at this stuff, and how it's coming up, council member is completely right, completely right. I understand we hope one, one to get this money allocated, and by the way, how much more time do I have?
Two.
Okay, thank you, ma'am chair. Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, did we ever get the money, uh, for creating this deadline, that we were supposed to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Is that, is that a question I can ask?
Yeah, through you, ma'am chair, to Mr. Moore, did we ever get the money?
He don't know, leave that man alone.
Yes, through the paperwork, uh, I do not, just may proceed that from the other bar.
Okay, so you'll be here, councilmember, don't know what to talk about, the critical thinkers, and so we did not, so we have not received that money yet, right? And do we know how much we're getting? Our last conversation was, you didn't know the exact amount.
I still don't know the exact.
You still don't know the exact amount?
No, Hammer, let's go sit down, baby.
And Russia put the forty million in our account, and we still don't know how much we getting, and so just look at the stuff I'm saying, but these are critical thinkers up here, critical thinkers. You know, I need them to be comprehensive, I mean, to comprehend the readings. You have to read it and understand. So we don't know, do we have a date when, uh, we have a, a ballpark?
Uh, that's, that's right, now's the end of March, we should find out.
Could you say that again?
The end of March is when we should find out.
Okay, so we did this all before December, and we still, we're gonna, we have to look right now to get two hundred and fifty thousand, we haven't gotten zero so far. We don't know how much we getting so far. So we know who on this council was getting ARPA money, first in the second ward, and also in the seventh ward. So I just don't, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this, so you could write and say it ten times to try to persuade people, in my opinion, I'm not buying. We didn't get the money that we thought we were supposed to, this high touch to get it done, and how much we getting? We didn't, we moved that forty million dollars over, and haven't gotten anything, got a very big O P, nothing. I'm done.
I think you're very, very nice, and, okay, the chair recognizes the council person in the third ward.
Very much, and to the listening audience, and to the public that's watching, um, my colleague in the sixth ward say, I know what I'm talking about, I know clearly what I'm talking about. And if you heard what I said, and, I'm gonna use her word, go back to the wrong tape. I said to the public, and to those who are watching, that are critical thinkers, but you can add us in there too, since you brought up our name. If you listen to my, um, colleague in the eighth ward, just make his feel, uh, his interpretation of Miss Fulton Shelley's heart breathing, and if, if you listen to him, and you watch him, and his delivery, it sounds really convincing. If you listen to my colleague in the sixth ward talk, it can be enticing to believe what y'all hearing. Uh, what I am saying to this public is, you have to be careful what you listen to, where you get your information from, and what you read and interpret, because interpretation is very critical. And people will text something, read it, and interpret it, and make you believe their interpretation, and they, they can get emotional with it too. And, and, and the doo-doo, doo-doo, and all of that. I'm just saying, that's why, and they call us, I, I heard one of the public speakers say the Fab Five, that's why, and then to the young man that's here representing, um, the ch- church right here on Fleming and Piercey Road, um, the Kennedy Family License Center, that's why you have some of us up here, and, and you work with your pastor, and you understand the critical meaning of what you guys are trying to do. That's why it's important that some of us on this council work hard to do what we can to make sure you get the tools that you need to help y'all move forward on the stuff that y'all trying to do around the Kennedy Center. Because if you want to have people like my colleagues get up here and make these emotional interpretations of what we thinking, and call us our name, and talk about people, organization, and what they is doing, and what they ain't doing, my colleague in the seventh ward clearly my colleague in the seventh ward clearly explained to this public that's application that they put in for the fifty building center with the water, um, organization that she represent was put in prior to her being appointed on the-
Does she play as you move? I'm sorry, should we request your information with your last name, Madam Chair? Uh, did she disclose a bill or a document to let us know? Did she give the slow and the proper for?
I refuse, I refuse to answer your question.
Ah, damn, okay.
So, what I'm saying to you is, my, my colleague came out publicly and told you guys that the application that they put in was put in prior to her being appointed on the seventh ward, she didn't know that she was gonna be applying for a position to get an appointment. So in the middle of whatever, her application came up. She has no discretion, or what she's supposed to do, bore her application because she put an application? I don't think not. And what they doing is critical, she already explained herself, I don't even think you can explain yourself again, because you said what you saw. But what I'm saying to this public, just be careful for nothing on what y'all listen to, and, and, and you know, some of us come up here with suits on, I got me one on today, but I'm just saying, you come up here with suits and nice hairdos, and nice wardrobe, and, um, emotional thoughts, and we come out here, and we might move our head, and we might point our finger, and all of that, to make y'all believe, because some of us attracted to, um, messiness. So I'm just saying, be, be very careful what y'all listen to. And when y'all see us walking to try to move things forward, it's because we think it's the best thing we're doing, this is for the best interest of the city of Flint, and not based on some emotional thoughts of my colleague or somebody that's making y'all believe that, um, the staff is a liar, um, calling, talking about what Shelley brings sparks, this is it.
Yeah, I'm with you. I was gonna say, alright.
I need you to get back up here, because y'all don't know what y'all talking about, y'all almost know, Dennis.
Try to get a second one. Thank you, miss.
I don't know what the hell I'm gonna say.
So, I'd be extradited, because we been on brotherhood, you know, the wrongs and wrongs. I'd be extradited, I just wanted just to mention a few things clear. For one, it's sad that our colleague in the eighth ward continues to pick a winner. Continue to call her a liar. That's very disrespectful. That's very disrespectful, to call that grown woman a liar. But, at the end of the day, when we attack women, this is what it looks like.
Uh, here you fight for women?
It's sad, that he also followed up with, we removed the voice of the first ward, not at all.
What's she looking at?
The voice of the fourth, first ward decided that he didn't want to represent the first ward, and he refused to come to order. But in any event, when you're advocating for voting, that's not representing you anyway. So what this body is gonna do, we're gonna move this resolution forward, so the first ward can move forward, but unfortunately, the colleague of the first ward sent it back. We're tired of playing these political games, and these political semantics. And then, yeah, and I hear someone completely yelling out, this is not church. This is where you respect, if you respect a courtroom, you give this chamber the same respect.
You ain't no judge.
Period. As I proceed, I hear my colleague continue to spew that they got money from their nonprofits. Let, we already addressed that, but I'm going to just ask this question. That's like, what happened to my colleague in the sixth ward bill, beside the platform of hate in the in-laws? Last, I'm not saying no neighborhood association, no events, no nothing.
What? She listened to my part.
That, that's not how it is.
I got six relationships in mind.
But hey, okay, so, so, so with that being said, she's not the one that got back and forth. And so, and so, and so, if we wanna talk about, and I don't know, because when we keep hearing these lies on four, five, six, seven, so, as you stated, I got six neighborhoods in my ward, how many have you started? What are you gonna tell them?
Is she now saying she is a-
Excuse me, one second, one second, councilwoman, this, this Beranza, the court, she did a request information.
I will say, I own Cyrus Park, and you started, but you contradicting yourself, liar.
As stated previously,
This is a damn tube.
With pride, I started Cyrus Park Neighborhood Association. With pride, I helped other Cyrus Neighborhood Association in the second ward. With pride, I built a lot of things in the second ward. With pride, I helped all other organizations across the city of Flint. I have to sit here, and from stone, with no other better. So what we need to do, we need to stick to the facts. Stick to the real facts.
Excuse me, what is your request?
Did, um, the council, councilman, goes to fifty thousand for Cyrus Park?
Yep.
And you got that?
Miss Beranza.
I mean, that's a good question.
Please proceed, point board, what is your point? I have a colleague that's using constant points of your information to interrupt the chairs.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, Ms. Beranza, I would ask that she please allow her time. Proceed.
Thank you, and furthermore, you request information only to be used to help with your next vote. So that's the proper way for request information to be used. So, furthermore, so furthermore, as we continue to say, did you apply, the current president applied for the, for the money? And when it was going to the floor, I was not here.
She can't.
So, again, we don't have, we didn't have a second, we can laugh when you do nothing. So you specialize in laughing when you have nothing else.
Man, these are all sorry.
I will go ahead and ask you this for the rest of my time, because, again, this is, this is what we go for when we come to these meetings. People that have nothing trying to, they can get something to start chaos. This is where our colleague, colleague in the sixth ward, went to the airport, mentioned with a colleague that she's arguing with, I was just waiting for the next meeting, because I knew it was gonna get messy, and this is what, how, what she does.
Press for permission, I'm going to the airport, what are you talking about?
Okay, no, that was an improper request, please, wrap up your time.
And, so after I wrap up my time, let's stick to the facts without the gaslighting. That will move the community forward. And I'm proud to go through the first ward, and after the fourth ward, we're calling, we're gonna move forward in the first way that we will move to council, let's get the work done on the board, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak in the second and final round of this, of the agenda? Is there anyone else? Okay, so with that being said, I will save my time. Um, as previously stated, this is ARPA money, the resolution says ARPA, there's no other way to talk about this allocation is, that is what th- this money is for. I do want to address the constant moving of the goalposts. You see, because I have a problem with being transparent and honest about what I'm doing, because I do not look in dishonesty. My very first meeting, I disclosed the fact that the water lab had applied for money during, uh, the ARPA deadline in March. That's no secret, I'm not trying to hide it, I have no reason to hide it. There's nothing nefarious going on there. I also want us to be mindful of the fact that that resolution still has never even come before council. So we gotta be honest when we're talking. You keep saying someone has thirty thousand dollars and all that, and it's never even come before council. So we have to be honest, what is your request?
Our request is, are you affiliated with the water, um, the redevelopment center that is requesting three hundred thousand?
Thank you for your improper request, because I just was talking, and it laid it off, I need you to pay attention. So, as I was saying, as I was saying, what is your request?
Our request is, since you brought up, are you affiliated with the resolution that did come, so, for three hundred thousand?
Let's do this again, you all can run back to what I said, and everyone heard what I said. I understand when you're trying to do so, run and take back, because you aren't listening, I understand you're over there typing, so, um, then we watch again, you will hear what I said, but I said from the very first thing that I was speaking, it was never been a secret, it's never been hidden, and as you can see, the goalpost has been moved again. Now that I've stated that, now the goalpost is, are you affiliated, now, and all this, the reality is, it's never come before council, I am. It has not come before council. So you present to me the resolution and the number that's come before council, and we can continue. Also, this is not a back report, this is my time. I do my best not to interrupt anyone, so please do not interrupt me. I do my best to be respectful when it is your turn, so please allow me the same respects, thank you. Now, that we got to hear that, and I think one more time, just so we are clear, because I want to make sure everybody's clear. That two three zero four six four point one, which was approved on December twenty, twenty twenty-three, says that this is an ARPA money, can only be used for ARPA funding in specific ARPA categories, which means it has to follow the ARPA compliance. Which means that, uh, that there was already a deadline date for the ARPA money to be spent that day, it's still in place, because this has to follow those ARPA rules according to this resolution. I'm so sorry that we got so far off the track of the fact that we're supposed to be talking about two three zero three one nine point one to get some money over to the first ward, so that they can get this money for snow, or butter, or all the wonderful work that they're doing over at the James C. Kennedy Life Center. I thank you for coming in this evening, I thank you for your patience on today. I know sometimes it can be a little difficult, because we're listening to people talk, and not saying agenda items, so I want to make sure I go back to the agenda item.
He represents Pastor Reed.
And I'm saying, thank you to James C. Kennedy Life Center for all the work that it does in the first ward, I want us to support we continuing to do that work in the first ward. With that said, roll call, Madam Corgan. This is to send resolution two three zero three one nine point one to council. Ms. Bruce Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Beranza?
I stand.
Yes. Mr. Parker?
No.
Ms. Worthy?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabius, one no, one extension? The vote is five yes, one no, with one extension. Resolution two three zero three one nine point one has been moved to council. On the agenda item, resolution two three zero four six six, I will entertain a motion for resolution two three zero four six six. Councilman, ready?
To make the motion to send that to the public, there is a specific address to the last one.
Alright, there is a motion on the floor, I'm, excuse me for not saying what that resolution is for everyone. Resolution two three zero four six six, setting a public hearing, amended council rules, implementation of amended council rules with immediate effect, that, uh, councilman in the eighth ward has made a motion to send this to government affairs. Is there a second for the motion? It has been properly supported, is there any discussion? Uh, the chair recognizes the councilperson in the fourth round. Okay.
The date is wrong.
Gotta have discussion, Murk.
Oh, yeah, point board. What is your point?
I'm yelling out.
I say you have to have a discussion.
Alright, thank you, um, really good, thank you. Uh, I would ask the audience to refrain from yelling out, um, the question has been called, it has been properly supported. Point board, what is your point?
Can we get Murk with the city attorney to make sure?
Yes, uh, city attorney?
Um, what's the question?
The question is, the department's rules, can we, that I give us the legal advice as to, uh, council question? Is that we have to have a discussion first?
I would ask that the audience to refrain from yelling out, thank you.
There is a specific rule set forth in each council board, rule sixteen, rule sixteen point one, says that the council attorney is going to move the order which is the part that, uh, they, they have to special for the court.
Can you repeat what that rule is?
Rule sixteen point one.
Is that the new one?
Yeah. Ms. Beranza?
Oh, because that's a bad question, okay.
Alright, so with that said, the question has been called, and it's supported, roll call that first. Alright, I think you said it, um, the second was from the, the councilperson in the ninth ward. Ms. Beranza? Yeah? Ms. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
I stand, but then I thought, oh, the big, um, council board was, uh, criminal, criminal. No.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no, and one extension? The vote is five yes, one no, and one extension?
I'm gonna say, say it.
Madam Chair? City attorney?
Yes.
Is the number to call the question, has that been satisfied?
Uh, yes.
Alright.
There's seven council members present here, and five will be in front.
Okay, thank you, um, what's the-
So they just round to whoever here.
Maybe two thirds.
Yes. Ms. Worthy?
She don't know.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
He just told her how to vote.
He just told her how to vote? Yeah, he just told her how to vote. Damn.
Yes.
She just told her how to vote, he just told her how to vote. He just told her how to vote.
I remember, you gotta go check what else you hear.
My, I be damned, I be damned. I don't know, but he told her how to-
I remember, you gotta go check what else you hear.
The vote is, I'm sorry, can you say that number again? The vote is two yes, five no. The vote is two yes, five no, Madam Chair. Ms. Bruce Lee?
Yes, I have an amended resolution that the protocol passed out, and it's calling for a public hearing on amended council rules. It is written in the, um, the immediate effective process.
Ladies, ladies, please, please, let's stay focused, no arguing. Thank you. Excuse me, councilwoman, uh, Beranza, councilwoman Moore, thank you. Thank you. And this is an amended resolution, Ms. Bruce Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's the, the resolution, ma'am?
Um, res- this meant resolution two three zero four six six to set in a public hearing without any implementation of amended rules.
I'm sorry, repeat that one more time.
This just sets the hearing for the amended council rules, but does not take immediate effect.
We have no idea what they vote on.
Alright, so this is a resolution that the public does not have before them.
No.
On campus.
We don't have none of the seven.
Can we get a copy of it?
All seven of them.
So that part of this is changed, because I want to make sure we read that part to the public.
I'll read the whole.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Section three dash one oh three D of Flint City Charter, and powers of the city council to ensure that its own rules are future. Section one dash eight oh one of Flint City Charter requires, before such rules may be adopted, a public hearing must be held with notice containing the title and an abstract proposed rule of that public hearing, given, given at least two weeks in advance. Uh, section one dash eight oh one H of the Flint City Charter also provides that proposed rule may be given immediately effective
Say, give up.
for a period not to exceed sixty days pending completion of the required procedure. In the past years, by meetings that often last for eight or more hours, but Flint City Council and its committees have failed to complete its all-business reading listed on its agendas, arguments about parliamentary procedure have predominated over substantive items of city business. Multiple special meetings have been called in order to address time sensitive items of city business that were not addressed during regularly scheduled meetings, creating additional burdens on council members, city staff, and the public. Attached are proposed amendments to the rules governing meetings of the Flint City Council, and adoption of both these rules, um, I'm sorry, this, this is strong. It includes adoption of these rules on emergency basis.
Sure, sure wish this was an open meeting.
It is resolved that the appropriate city charter officers should do all things necessary to conduct a public hearing and attach proposed amended rules governing meetings of the Flint City Council to be held at the meeting of the Flint City Council on February twelve, January four, or any subsequent meeting of the Flint City Council as circumstances may warrant.
Okay, thank you. So this comes in two resolutions, two, three, zero, four, six, six, point one.
So as, as part of my amended, I, I should have straightened the third, um, the third paragraph.
Right, which is in touch with our legislative agenda rules guide. All right, and then once we strike that, that's a point four one. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, right, it has been properly submitted by the A Ward councilmate. Is there any discussion?
Call for the court.
Um, councilman.
So, Julia, I appreciate your counsel, um, appreciate, I appreciate this management. How would we want to address any amendments to the rules itself, actually the processes? Um, is it going to be a discussion level or is it going to be a, a resolution each for the next meeting? So how do we do that? I guess, who are you, Madam Chair?
City attorney.
The Lord have.
Uh, Ms. Murray, could you confirm as to, uh, the, the resolution that sets a public hearing for revision of council rules that be scheduled in the date specified? Uh, there will be a second resolution to approve the council rules as new rules. And that common, uh, seemed to be appropriate, and what council had in the last time was, is that basically proposed, uh, for the proposed amendments or, you know, changes to proposed rules were, were made by members of council voted on the floor in the bottom half of the bottom. So, um, just so I'm clear, so the next step of the process would be to give the resolution attached to the new proposed rules, it would, it would be presented back to government affairs? Um, yes, that's the, that would be usual, uh, if you, to the council, the government affairs. They just, they just can't go into a faculty lab and a public hearing, so that's, we have a separate public hearing.
And using the last, if I like, to speak, decision.
Yes.
Did you recognize the councilperson in the fourth ward?
So, um, I didn't support your rule, that's me, because, um, my colleague made me aware that he would want to take effect immediately. I would have a problem with that. The other piece that I had a problem with is that my colleagues wasn't contacting about any amendments that you guys, um, wanted to add or changes. Do you, um, Madam Chair, continue? Did, um, my colleagues talk to you or any proposed changes to the rules? To the part, this question to you, so.
Madam Chair. I was providing a place after, uh, uh, the rules, changes, for the, I was not, it was given to, I think I had, but I didn't see, I didn't see the final decision.
So, so now I'm kind of confused.
So did anyone reach out to you with any?
My question to the clerk was, when I voted against this, my issue was that my colleagues didn't have time to look at the rules to make any kind of changes. So I voted against it because I wanted to give my colleagues the opportunity to look over the rules and if they wanted to make any changes, instead of changes either to the president, vice president, um, Ms. Bruce Lee, or the clerk of any changes. So my question is, did my colleagues reach out to the clerk, the president, the vice president, the?
Ain't she supposed to give a tour?
Ms. Bruce Lee, did?
Oh, they gotta ask for it.
Were any amended changes?
Oh, he looking at me.
Well, at least that would be, I don't have to give anybody a question.
I can't hear, I can't hear.
She said no.
She said no.
Correct.
Well, could any of my colleagues ask the question?
Oh, you've been informed. Ms. Murphy, these haven't been up for discussion yet. They've?
I'm sorry, Ms. Bruce Lee, did, did you?
I said, please.
I'm sorry, I cannot wait for. Thank you. Did you recognize the councilperson in the fourth ward?
Thank you.
Your loss.
Since this has now been, um, gone to the table at all, I'll wait, they're just coming forward for immediate effect. Who has been the opportunity to be in these rules and any amendments coming from committee? We asked that public hearing first.
Well, well, here's the problem that I have.
Uh-oh.
Just, y'all have some rules. My colleagues already said that you guys didn't reach out to them. I think it would have been the correct thing to do to give them a copy of the rules, even if y'all sent it in a box or emails them so that they can look over them. My hope was from the last meeting, they will be able to look over the rules and make changes. That's why I voted against it. When y'all don't do that right there, that's what makes me don't want to vote for because between you guys in leadership position and my colleagues saying they didn't receive the rules, I think it's equally important that they have a copy because the rules like me, we're giving a copy of the rules. I believe the rules within the council agenda to vote. So I'm not, I, I'm not sure my colleagues have not just received the rules because I, if I recall, the rules were in the council agenda.
See, five seconds.
Your request?
Ms. Murray, are you aware that they've been in the council agenda since early present? The rules.
Thank you. It is, it's already been, and I know, I know I saw it in the council agenda. If the council, today, if the council agenda, then you guys have been able to review the rules. And if y'all wanted to make any kind of changes in the rules, y'all had, but it was in our package for the council. So y'all had an opportunity to look over. And now you're getting between, that's right here.
What, what's your request? Counselor, I think a little bit of, um, I think the dialogue's coming from, but that should come from the, uh, the here, who would have go to, I just need to, um, the clerk first. There's no, uh, great information as it would have been when, um, Allen was here, as to who he directed to, who he give it to, um, so who he sent it to. So if they stated, and I've been over all of this, and some of the rules that have been needed in the last session, um, because these rules are going to complicate how this, to my, I, I, I went to my.
See, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. What, what I'm saying to my colleagues is I'm not comfortable when you guys are working on something this important, the rules.
He flip it back, he flip it back that quick.
Rather, I agree with my colleagues. Y'all just sent me advice of going, having differences of a thing, yeah, me and Tiny have it all the time. But I'm, that, that don't mean that I don't respect your position as a country and want to make sure that you guys are getting good information. But I also don't want to hold this up because y'all may have other intentions and not want to work. And I do believe that the council has been in an agenda before. So we all have had our chance to review the rules and make changes. If that's what we did. So the reason why I voted no the last time because I was trying to give my colleagues the opportunity to look over the rules. I think like the emergency, I talked to my colleague about it. She worked on striking the emergency rules. We gave, I think it's.
Watch him out, yes.
Um, hoping that you guys, um, could, um, do the rules. I, I'll be voting for these rules because it allows the Congress to shine a light on whose party to adopt them. And it also allows us to figure out a way, uh.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
To get them.
Thank you.
Right, to get them.
Thank you. No. Um, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Uh-uh. That was six minutes.
Yes.
That was six minutes, thirty-seven seconds.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? The chair recognizes the councilperson in the fourth ward.
So, Counselor, and I want to take a few time. The rules are important as to how to judge what these rules do is give absolute and total power and complete power to whoever's chair. We do know that we have, well, very tall, these rules turn around and look and watch people. It really can't, I mean, it really can't talk. Our rules fair just much or not. And I think we need to skip that. Um, when you go make rules to punish a certain group of people or people, it doesn't work. I mean, it doesn't work. And we look at how, if these, if these things do change, that we're going to have some problems. Because it isn't going to be reversed, it's going to be difficult, what was y'all named? So I just don't think, because they change very different chairs. And I say keep the rules fair, keep them, you know, to where they work for everyone. Um, I, when you talk about, did we submit, uh, change, it should have come to the council president, I believe, that one. She has not given an email to state any of how to move from here, we're working on how to write the amendment. Leadership did not give that. And then the absence of it, we're, they, they, they're too, they didn't give anybody else a name.
Because that one wasn't here. So did Ally send it on, to you, or did she go through the smart guy's home?
She actually sent to EBI. She sent to EBI, and then we had dialogue at times during our council meetings, um, about, not about, but we had dialogue.
Thank you.
This entire, we, this entire rule that had been in place were only done, which they said that committee were, um, people who were chairs, chairs, only for the people who turned out like chairs and their business. It shuts down every war. It shuts down the voices of every war to where it's, it makes it easy for them. And that's not what it should be. You should have to be fair because if they come back and say, council loses the president and it switches, you know, she's going to have a hard time. Because someone may not be kind to her, or they want to see their contribution. And so that's why they have the rules clear, precise, and they're fair, and they're not fair. So who do you send the rules to? The chairman. They didn't send us the rules. Who would we send it to? And that was the question I didn't speak to the, uh, to see what, about who we send it to. Our president's absent, she didn't speak to, she didn't send out an email requesting. But their rules did not do that. All we got was rules that wanted to force, uh, immediately because they wanted to control things in there. I don't like the fact that it's hit, weaponizing the police, the rest of the weaponizing the police against themselves. This whole dictatorship is a problem because if it flips, we don't have pride to the end of our term. It's going to be consequences because they're not fair. Some of you think a lot of work to put things on agenda. House, if you have something to put on the agenda, you got to make sure you get along with whoever chairs, and it shouldn't have to be like that.
Got to get ponytail.
If you wanted to be mayor and discuss special order, you should hear decades. Now, that takes away your power, your voice, your word. And we, we think that all is a great.
I could wrap her ponytail around it. Yes, we are still in special affairs. It didn't start at five o'clock. Probably won't get to conference until about nine thirty.
The chair, but the chair is not the chapter. And if this council flips, it's going to be a problem on the other side. And, and we have to look to the future to say, if they don't agree, what are they wanting to be? The rules are just not, they're not fair, they don't make sense on us. I think we should have a working session. I mean, who you sit aside there, I don't like you, and say, let's just focus on the rules. This should be a special meeting and a working session so we go through them and we get them right together. I don't go around robbing all of them. If I call one person, I don't call anybody else. If I call councilor, I don't call any other councilor, I don't do that. I don't talk to any councilperson, every single day. I don't do that. I don't do that. So I think that what we need to do is have a working session so we get together for all of them and have, to tweak them together so we don't keep differences. We can do it right this time so we don't have to do it in two thousand twenty-nine, and then two thousand twenty-six, and we just get it done and have a good set of rules and put in the works. That's what should be done. I don't speak in time.
Thank you.
Well, she's speaking, the official time.
She, she, she worked on it.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Um, the chair recognizes the house person in the ninth ward.
Um, oh, I don't know. Uh, this isn't weaponizing anything. These are rules that were, um, used, or Roberts rules was used as a guideline. So many of these we call back to Roberts rules. And, um, I've not heard any complaints about rules, rules, and penalties. Um, talking about council flips, uh, this tomorrow will be disaster, but I've been there. Um, Mr. May's, I remember, was, uh, the president, and he, the dog went to use the bathroom, and he told her she had a leak, which was no longer, um, allowed to pack it. That is weaponizing the rules. It can be done under any rules, but those are the old rules. Um, the new rules just allow a more streamlined process so that we can, it's now been pretty hours since the meeting was supposed to begin. We have not yet gotten any move to council. Um, lots of talking, um, arguing, talking about colleagues instead of issues. Um, I'm hoping that the new rules give us a more sense of order so that we're not a national disgrace. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the house? You can have this then. The chair recognizes the councilperson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and thank you so much, um, Congress, leaving the ninth ward for adding that. You know, um, I, I hear them bring up the former president, Allen. Well, we were, keep the passing rules, even though not that she was there. Regardless, regardless, when the rules don't, when they apply you and you have, um, you have to follow them, they have a problem now. These rules were inspired by the JNC municipal league because these rules are set for, these rules are based upon, uh, instances that we had at this meeting. So we can make sure, when what we did, we had a few things to cover outside of our rules, we made sure that we put those things in these rules. That's what we did. And so I, I don't, I don't like the, when I hear this truth go out saying that, well, well, Allen did, Allen did the way you had a problem with Allen did. So let's not have like routine Allen. The fact of the matter is, having rules, you have a sense.
What's your request?
Thank you. Did Allen send out emails that I responded to? Or was it sure the edge?
All right, uh, continue, please.
Absolutely. As a proper, that was the point is, we had the rules before this body, in understanding. This body was at liberty to do their job and go through the rules. It is now according to this agenda, January the twenty-second.
Request your question. What is your request?
If we were to go through them, thank you, Madam Chair. So we're just to send the corrections to you because you gave no guidance, who would we have sent them to?
Thank you, Counselor. Proceed.
So, you know, when we break home and stuff of that nature, we are acting out of being a part of having the conversation about the rules.
Oh, no, she's saying it.
If anyone had any concern about these rules right here, they could have voiced their concerns. Unfortunately, we're here and we're at a finger pointing session, here. Unfortunately, we're here, and we're at a finger pointing session, hearing the lack of leadership and so forth. No, the fact is, leadership is doing what they're supposed to do, when people have a problem with it. We need for colleagues, again, to abide by these rules, so we can move things forward. And so, I'm, I'm not one of this, belabor the same points, but I'm one of highlight the points that our, our colleagues have the rules and have enough time to make the decisions, give suggestions. These rules were not passed until middle of the night, and these rules are inspired from the Michigan Municipal League and other municipalities to maintain order. Because our council, the way that we govern, and the way we govern, this is joke. The fact that some can be called order, and if we have colleagues appeal the ruling of the chair, and the rule has been blatantly violated, that's a waste of time. But, people have one policy, we use the word weaponize, we weaponize the rules to obstruct the business of the city. These rules are cut, are sliced into that, so we can't do it. So, if individuals wanna appeal the ruling of the chair, we don't need fifty-five people appealing, the person that appealed is the chair. Let's go ahead, let's get rules that broke us, so we can move on. It's not the same time for people to continue to interject things that are not true, or things that they wanna, um, say against our colleagues, is to speak about that specific interest in them more. These rules help with order, and with order, we will have a chamber, give them back to the residents, so they can practice their democracy.
I'd like to ask the audience, who are pleased, who are ordered?
And, and, and thank you, and, and that's the point. See, we laugh and we joke, and we think this is funny, but again, we will have order in these chambers, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the only person left, if you would like your time, besides myself, is Mr. Smith. Alright. Now, we will, roll call number two-three-zero-four-six-six-point-one, I give it to you.
Yes. It's very loud.
The chair.
Go ahead.
Oh, what?
The chair.
Support. Okay, it, it's been a little bit of a while, this is the board. Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Brissel?
Yes.
I have standing, December eighteen-twenty, January third, January eighth, councilwoman Grok, in no show of guilt, call needs to order.
Pass. Oh, this five yes, one no, one extension. No, this five yes, one no, one extension, we will now, we'll see whether this is two-three-zero-four-six-six-point, uh, sorry, what's your call? Uh, the motion is over. I'll be up soon, the motion is over. Uh, we will now vote to amend two-three-zero-four-six-six-point-one, not two-point-one. Roll call number. I thought we did, Matt Carter, where are we? No, we are, we are voting for the amendment now. Matt Carter, would you please, um, whatever's going on?
Um, the last one is to call a question on this amendment.
Okay, and so, this is to send this amendment to council, correct?
This is to amend.
This is just to amend, okay, roll call number.
This one?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Brissel?
Yes.
I have standing, December eighteen-twenty, January third, eighth, members of this body, were informed, and no show of guilt, call needs to order, to do the business.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The votes are this year, so all, all extension? Well, this six yes, zero no, extension, uh, that was to amend the amendment. The chair recognizes the council person in the main room. There's an motion on the floor, to send two-three-zero-four-six-six-point-one, the second of a hearing amended council rules, implementation of amended council rules, with immediate effect to council. Is there support?
Support.
It has been moved and properly supported, and we discuss. The council, the chair recognizes the council person in the second board.
Thank you.
Alright, this is to move and properly support. Roll call number. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Brissel?
Yes.
Murphy?
I have standing, December eighteen-twenty, January third, and eight, the council president failed to call some per meetings to order, was broke for, and failed to show up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
No. Yes.
This is five yes, one no, one extension, and resolution two-three-zero-four-six-six-point-one, setting a public hearing amended council rules, implementation of amended council rules, with immediate effect, has been moved to council. Excuse me, not with immediate effect, I don't, pardon. You have the right one. You have the right point one. Resolution said a public hearing amended council rules has been moved to council. No. Alright, roll call number. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Brissel, yes. Mr. Murphy?
I have standing, December eighteen-twenty, January third, eighth, members of this body, were informed, no show, and failed to call meetings, have privilege to do business of the city.
Mr. Chair, yes. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Yes.
Well, this six yes, zero no, one extension? Well, this six yes, zero no, one extension, so, resolution two-three-zero-four-six-six-point-one, setting a public hearing amended council rules, implementation of amended council rules, has been moved to council. Yes, the chair recognizes the council person in the main room.
Motion two-one, amend two-three-zero-four-seven-nine, to one, to change the count number? Or reset the one?
Some damn parking lots, man, in the parks. Parking lots in the parks.
Uh, there's been a motion to send, resolution two-three-zero-four-seven-nine, back to my answer, second. It's been moved and properly supported, it's not in the discussion. The chair recognizes the council person in the main room.
Seems like this one doesn't have the right count number, and, um, you want to, so, and the, the speed, the speed is, uh, sending back, and hopefully, we can do it out of, it's that time sensitive, so it's gonna be, ask all to the middle.
Well, if you're going.
I know, Mr. Murphy, the person I hear, I understand, we discussed this. These were, um, these are resolutions that came through the, the park, um, improvements, so those are the next account numbers. Yes, we do.
If I could clarify, I'm unable to clarify those issues. Uh, this, the council previously approved, following the rule, the counters listed. Uh, these are to improve contracts that, that number would be issued, but that the legislature would likely issue, to, because those contracts exceed the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. Uh, so, but this council, they already approved the front. Does that answer your, uh, thoughts or questions? So, they already approved the money, because I thought four million dollars was transferred, all remaining. This wasn't part of the forty million, this was, this was something the council previously involved, um, for the administration to, now, it's not as important. Uh, but, but, that doesn't supersede that the contract that we're awarding, or is it excessive, the seventy-five thousand, um, so, those contracts had to come back, constantly.
Mr. Murphy, do you, do you have a copy of the, the?
Party report, alright. The chair recognizes the council person in the board.
Mr. Murphy, do you have a copy of the, um, of the art budget report that I appear, and other parts? There is a large, um, second one, that count number, um, one, one million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-eight, that was here to set, of your time, November seventeenth, um, resolution two-three-zero-four-two-six. Those dollars are already, if you move, they will be transferred to the general. And, um, my numbers matched, this is the, um.
So, so, just want to clear, we already did the, all for these, and now, what is the purpose of this one?
The purpose are to approve the contracts, to enter into the contracts, to do what that we follow us.
I understand, because I love the, meaning of course, and the, and the count number.
What's the four parks? Nobody told us what the four parks is.
Yes.
The chair recognizes the council person in the board?
Oh, uh, no, no. Was it two-three-zero-four-seven-nine to count?
Support. Call a question. Okay, well, it's good, the question has been called, it's already, roll call number. Right now, we're voting to.
That's the chair. Yes, the first question, we know this is the council, we would go to the main room.
Roll call number. Mr. Brissel?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Well, this six yes, four no, um, and we will now vote, uh, to, for, for the, I'm sending two-three-zero-four-seven-nine to my next. Two-three-zero-four-seven-nine, excuse me, uh, is the contract Eastern Aswell Service, a city parking lot.
Okay, I'm sorry, was it the close call plans?
No, no, we had to come through the plans. Who's on, roll that? The vote is zero, yes, six, no, I, I share this, uh, council member.
Uh, motion is sent to two-three-zero-four-seven-nine.
There has been a, two-three-zero-four-seven-nine, uh, contract Eastern Aswell Service, a city parking lot, to council, there's a, it's been moved and properly supported by the council person, for the board, is there a discussion? We move call. He says that I, I, for, but that was true. Councilman Murphy? Alright, um, we are combining, two-three-zero-four, the nine, contract Eastern Aswell Service, a city parking lot, and resolution two-three-zero-four-eight-zero, which is contact nationwide construction installation of waters in city parks, it's been moved and properly supported, any discussion? Council member. Call for the question, is there a support? Alright, it's been properly supported, or call the chair. The vote is five yes, zero no, extension, we will now vote, the resolutions two-three-zero-four-seven-nine and two-three-zero-four-eight-zero to council. We're voting to move to council. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Murphy?
Yes.
Brissel, yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no. Resolution two-three-zero-four-seven-nine, contract Eastern Aswell Service, a city parking lot, and resolution two-three-zero-four-eight-zero, contact nationwide construction installation of waters in city parks, has been moved to council. Uh, we will move to resolution two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero. Will it take a motion?
Yes.
Go on.
I make a motion to send, resolution two-four-zero-zero-zero, assistance for the city, third residents, more qualified, and possible education, to finance.
Alright, it's been moved and properly supported by the council person in the fourth board, is there any discussion? Uh, council, all questions? Okay, so, the question has been called by the council person, eight, is supported by the council person in the fourth board, roll call number.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Yes.
Murphy? Yes. Yes. That's funny. Six yes, four no. The vote is six yes, one no, that, as, uh, the question has been called, uh, we will now to send, resolution two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero, which is assistance to city, of one residents, more qualified, and possibly education, to finance. Roll call number. Mr. Lewis? Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Brissel? Yes.
No.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, six yes, four no. The vote is six yes, one no, uh, resolution two-four-zero- Resolution two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero, assistance to city of one residents for a protest and education has been moved to finance. We will now to resolution two-four-zero-zero-zero-seven.
Banjo.
Councilwoman.
And, um, the motion to send two-four-zero-zero-zero-seven to council that block safety, public safety surveillance cameras.
Alright, it's been moved.
Supporting banjo.
It's been moved and properly supported by the councilwoman, six ward, councilwoman, the sixth ward is recognized as having the floor, officer Ruth.
This should be pretty quick. Um, officer Ruth, thank you for being here. Um, I'm thrilled to be facing some of the questions. Is this a service contractors as also equipment? Because it's neither ninety thousand dollars for five point five years. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Uh, through you, uh, now shared to council Burns. This is a contract for equipment as well as the service of the product.
Okay, and so we're looking at a little over two hundred thousand here. Uh, I know council had wanted to talk about one of the chambers, that you give us a round about number, how many cameras that this does cover, if it's a fact, figures, money.
So it's a one hundred eighty thousand dollars for a sixty month contract. Uh, and that covers, um, so you have about two hundred nineteen units.
Okay. And so this also includes the service. So service giving, this also includes the additional cameras or servicing the existing?
So this is, uh, this covers existing cameras, we're not using this to purchase more, this is the existing cameras that are already deployed.
Okay, so this, this includes if they're repaired, they go down, um, within the company to replace them?
Correct.
And, um, these cameras are in all nine wards?
These cameras are strategically placed throughout the city.
Okay, and areas where we get, um, um, uh, Mr. Ruth, uh, Mr. Ruth is trying to answer for you. Where do you get your data from? So hotspots, is that correct?
Yes, they were identified as areas where we felt that it would best be, uh, utilized, provided with information to protect the public.
Do these are, is this, these cameras maybe to shoot shot spots, shot spots?
We do have technology that, uh, gives us data and information as well as to, uh, sounds of firearms throughout the cities.
Yeah, because I know one area they didn't have, um, they didn't have as many shootings and ideas, and maybe it's a lot over there.
Hell no, that ain't my man, I'm gonna get my ass whooped coming home tonight.
So, um, Mr. Feiger, this is a summary, the county will count.
My man ain't worth it. You stand my ass up, y'all. Y'all gonna have me calling the police.
Um, another question, have we had any more business access group like programs?
Uh, I don't know the last time that. So we're constantly having business.
Shit, y'all getting reckless, let me put the camera on hurt or some shit. Put your pain on hurt. Getting reckless of me.
I can see that it's been very difficult helping us to solve any minor issues.
That's Shanetta's man. She's way back there in the back, y'all see him back there? Sitting by Doug. There he goes.
And I appreciate you coming, I know this is something you personally go out to, uh, to areas.
I just got a video copy, that ain't my man. Hell to the no.
So, um, your experience in the dent system, which is ran by you, am I correct?
That's correct.
Um, it's, uh, very important in the city. Uh, and you really have very hands on it, and for that, I will tell you thank you, um, that's super valuable to me. Monitoring and putting these cameras, I appreciate that. That's it, that's, I'm sure, and that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who'd like to update, councilman Burns?
Thank you, um. I have a lot of, um, complaints in the rural neighborhood. Because it's kind of confidential where you strategically, um, put these cameras. I would, um, we hope that if that neighborhood do not have any neighbors. Yeah, we put some officers in, because that's why I did a lot of my clients in rural neighborhoods with shots fired. Not only the shots getting fired, whatever that loud boom noise that shake the ground. When we start putting pressure on, trying to bring in EPA or EQ or do some investigation in there, when we start getting on the news, talking about the loud boom and the blow, and I'm sure you guys have paid the nine-one-one, that is a people call the nine-one-one. The loud boom noise that shake people houses and messed up all off their wall, so it to me, because we, um, when we start getting knowledge on TV and all of that different kind of stuff, we always feast. So it must be some company in that area that know what they doing, whatever they doing. They shaking the ground to affect those residents over there. And when they start standing on the roof and putting pressure on there, for the last month, couple of months, I have not, or people have not heard the loud boom, they agree now on there. They have, so it's a company somewhere in that particular area that's doing something. And if we can get that shots fired or, and that's what I'm requesting, but I don't think, I heard the shots fired on the, um, shots, gunshots, so that's a different kind of going from the gunshot. But if we can invest in something over there to kind of track down when that loud boom noise happening in that particular area. We can try to figure out where it's coming from, because that's not right for whoever be doing whatever they doing over there. It's that now, when the whole neighborhood here can just shake their house. So if we don't have something, even if we could just get that camera, that kind of track down that boom noise, that'll make those residents feel better over there. I'm not saying I don't need cars from other areas, but that's where my high cars coming from. Either shots being fired, or the joint, my biggest concern is the loud boom noise. Because I don't know what happened in, um, council and fight war, or the trip happened over there, and we been hearing it, and they been complaining, and we did nothing to try to resolve the situation. So if people want on that, or we can get together, see what we can build a solution, maybe to try to help. Track down where's, that's very good something to me, it's been going on since I've been in there.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to, uh, okay, councilman Feiger?
Um, so I'm going to see, uh, so is this a lease? Well, that's a hundred eighty thousand dollars, because, um, I don't see two hundred cameras, but I think that the number is sixty-two. So what people are re-giving, is already, do we own that equipment, or this is just a lease?
It is, it is leasing the equipment. There are sixty.
Like Renaissance.
There are sixty-two Falcon cameras, one hundred fifty-seven Raven cameras. So that's a mixture of, uh, units that does different things.
Because this doesn't say anything about the equipment itself, so this is.
Correct, so on there, you, you see, s- excuse me for a minute, but on there you'll see a line item which says one. Uh, that covers, uh, a particular size throughout the city, so that one is a particular geographical size or space.
So, you, any of these block cameras we own, will release all two hundred?
Correct, we're leasing. Which clears us of service fees and different things, so that when they go down. Correct, there is, it's part of the cost.
So, um, Mr. Burns asked you about, um, is a service contract for getting physical equipment? Or are we getting it in the respect of leasing, right, we're not purchasing?
Correct, we're not purchasing.
Oh, just like that Kermit, just like that helicopter.
And, um, is there a competing company that we can offer to purchase against in the future? Or would he kind of marry to them to kind of tie them?
No, we're not married to them, we're married to more than marriage, this contract ever proved by the council, which we recommend. There are companies, uh, I'm quite sure that you would not like the figures that I bring to you for those different companies. Uh, during our research, we found something very effective, uh, but also very cost effective for fishing for the cities.
And my last question, Mr. uh, Mr. Murphy mentioned the shots fired. How does that get reported to nine-one-one, does that just go to internal and then we broadcast it out to our folks?
So there's no shortage of nine-one-one calls usually when shots are being fired. So they're getting those nine-one-one calls. What allows us, uh, typically, this technology.
Does this block, does this program immediately alert nine-one-one?
It immediately alert, alerts those units that are in the field, patrol units, and oftentimes far sooner than a nine-one-one call is sent to the nine-one-one center and then relayed to a new device.
So this is tied into the computers on the ground, making the work from this program directly to the screen, potentially before any nine-one-one calls.
Correct.
So what happens if we don't have a unit in that area?
They're, they're going out to do.
Does it go to every patrol car too?
It does go to every patrol car, as well as, uh, stations inside the, it's a computer units inside the police station, as well as the intelligence center that monitors, monitors those, uh, call files.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alright, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this agenda? Anybody else in the first round? Mm, thanks, alright, anybody to say a round?
Um, councilor.
Councilwoman Burns?
Is this coming out of the business fund?
Yes, ma'am, this is the business fund.
And so two quarters. Um, look at you. I have one ninety-eight, my nine, this actually comes back to source to eleven point five years. So this is coming out of the business fund budget. For you to Mr. Moore.
Aw, shit.
Mr. Moore, may you please join us at the later term?
Do you happen to know what these questions are dealing?
Hell no.
And do they have one specifically that, um, deals with technology? Uh, how much of this two hundred thousand is in the technology budget, or cameras or equipment budget?
Oh, uh, I believe that's a little less than.
Aw shit.
But, um, everybody go get a semester.
Right.
But you don't get a chance to manage this, so it's not.
This is Mr. Ruth, do you have to, like your budget for your department?
I don't know the overall budget, but it is coming out of equipment.
It's coming out of?
Yes.
Mr. Moore, do you have a, it's, um, with the equipment budget?
He don't know shit.
Yeah, hurry back, sir. Ma'am, listen.
All right.
This is a big, big, large portion of your budget. This, uh, I get not only cameras, because they can go down, especially in the winter time, um, because it's cold and the average computer is hard to repair. It's ice cold. That, and this rather does that, um, um, which we want to get back to, we have to last and everything else. So just get back to it when we can, um, I'm gonna thank you.
I think, councilman. All right.
Please.
Councilman.
Um, do you know why I have to say so, guys? Well, I think the one's a two sixty-five, one is one-on-one. Um, and I think the ninety is for the previous six months, I'm reading correctly.
I thought you promised, sorry, that's okay.
I guess my question is, is the, uh, the contract order says, the central order of review is one of the, the contract order is nine hundred thousand. But the resolution review, this resolution statute states that one hundred eighty thousand is for December twenty twenty-three through December twenty twenty-four. That should read December twenty twenty-three through December twenty twenty-four. If it's a hundred eighty thousand.
It says, so it's a five-year contract.
It's five years, and the, the two of this is, is nine hundred thousand.
Correct, at one hundred eighty per six.
The statute, the statute says that a hundred eighty thousand is for the duration of twenty-five years.
So it'd be one hundred eighty per year for five years, which would be nine hundred.
There's a statute, we do, we do, we have power of influence, right? On the resolution itself, is it as a total from nine to nineteen? The statute would use it for.
I think, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this agenda item? Anyone else in this second, in the final round, that wishes to speak to this agenda item? I think you saw that. Alright, uh, we will now vote to send two-four-zero-zero-seven, two-four-zero-zero-zero-seven, block safety, public safety, surveillance cameras to council, roll call that third.
Make the camera, she said it was. Um, he's two hundred and nineteen years.
Burns?
Yes.
Yes.
Feiger?
Yes.
Moore? Yes.
Yes.
The vote is six yes, two no. The vote is six yes, zero no. Resolution two-four-zero-zero-zero-seven, block safety, public safety, surveillance cameras has been moved to council, um, uh, we are on to resolution two-four-zero-zero-one-two, parliamentarian, or the city council. Did you recognize the council president in the fourth ward?
Make a motion to send two-four-zero-zero-one-two, parliamentarian, with links in council.
So has been moved and properly supported, there's any other discussion, councilwoman in the sixth ward, who has the floor.
We don't know. It's not.
So this too. Um, but they don't have, I don't know, put your vote to now. So I, uh, get right here. So the parliamentarian, is this what, um, do you not remember that Jennifer Paul, where you do it on Friday? I think Jennifer Paul was asked, was it one specific Friday, was that?
Yes, this is what this is.
So, um, so my question is, how many hours does Matt work with the street? And is that hundred seventy-five dollars an hour? And it's, I can't really know, first hour, is you?
He's shooting, he's out of the house, he's too many.
Yeah, so I just tried to.
Yeah, I don't need to.
Yeah, but I'm talking.
Well, again, that's right, you are correct. Well, again, Madam clerk, you are correct, go ahead, Madam clerk.
How many, how many hours she made a call out to Jennifer, she had, she had Jennifer. So how many hours is I be expected to have this with?
I understand it's four-hour training and three meetings up to four hours, each for twelve, sixteen hours, and that's what I came up with in that, um, twenty eight hundred hours.
So, the Friday meeting is not a meeting, I mean, is there somebody relying or we talked about separate meetings? Because-
Four-hour training and then three separate council meetings.
What's your statement?
My understanding is what was discussed with Mr. Henderson.
Now, where did this, who picked Mr. Henderson? Look at that problem, we didn't get the right last one, I did.
Uh, this information is from back to the other president.
Aw, Liddell, Liddell, there we go.
Okay, so, yeah, I don't have it open mind, I'm sorry, not for the president violates rules. I brought that video coming back, about two minutes, the president essentially tried to interrupt the meeting nine times in two minutes.
Whoa.
Nine times in two, about two minutes became about seventeen, eighteen minutes. I mean, it was crazy last week, so last, first she can't tell me, no.
Did some shit, oh, sorry.
On Friday night, if they, uh, dinner night, if it's a, um, one hour, so Friday night, Friday night, and all there's all of them.
She didn't pick the parliamentarian, Lord, I didn't heard it on.
Friday night, she did.
This is from the county from Shawnee, and this is from the South Door.
Uh, I'm sorry, can you please quiet your phones, audience?
So, we're supposed to give them for four, three meetings at four hours? And he's not having, Mr. Henderson is going to come here.
Um, I didn't know.
Okay, this is all about that, I mean, I'm not, because she don't follow rules.
Oh, yeah.
No, she doesn't have the permission to, they don't have the permission to just themselves tonight.
Good.
I mean, she's-
Murphy, you're just useful, get that out for-
I mean, I just don't- I just don't agree, I mean, I'll be paying at a hundred seventy-five, I don't think you have to get out. So, she wants us to do something, but she don't follow rules herself, and turn around and say, she wants everyone else to follow. Who's trying to fly fair and happy, because they allow the past to go. Like, I don't know, you know, then you had, he wasn't, he wasn't put out. That he was not put out, he was missing, and then he kept doing it, he kept, they continued doing it, as if he is a black woman, was a doll. Then he decides to go on to talk about my skin color. Now, he talked, they saw it, said, was telling the Murphy, said, and, and I said that was wrong. But Mr. Matthews said that I wasn't black, that my color was pumpkin. And he sits back here laughing, he said I was a black woman.
Thank you, sir, it was, um, I'm sorry, to the ninth minute, Counselor one, uh, pardon me, that is the word.
If our presentation is as bad as something, then I would expect them to support this resolution. Because then maybe personally, you know.
Request information?
No.
What's your request?
Thank you, if the council on the ninth ward just take a picture and post it on the joint council meeting.
I should did, and I thought, hey, all right, that's enough.
I'm having a legal meeting with the city attorney, and he was asking her to stop and let him discuss the legal meeting.
All right, that's a great point, Counselor one first, this is their proper request, Counselor one, would you please proceed?
And you need a parliamentarian to contrast that for you, Ms. Jones. Um, we know that you like to be on our radio shows and Facebooks and all kinds of things, but when it's towards you, you just can't.
Request your information.
Can't answer that, please, 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 please.
I do, but I need to be like chairs, right?
This person has already spoken to the president. It seems like the president has negotiated this contract. And do you have a chair to this? City council?
Attorney General.
Oh, Attorney General.
Is the city council, any person present or not, allowed to negotiate contracts on behalf of the city council?
He gonna say yes. Uh, here we go. Yeah.
Lots of people can negotiate contracts. It's certainly approved, but various people in the city will negotiate contracts.
He gonna have all their ass in jail. All of them.
You can't say that this is wrong, otherwise he didn't hear from the president.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any one else have a question?
Uh, Adele?
Yeah, uh, any one else can give their questions. This is the first round of the council meeting. Thank you. It's unfortunate that I had colleagues that accused me of not leading. And when the, when the president takes the lead, they openly admitted it in their support because the president is taking the lead. This makes no sense, none. So, we've been waiting for this Republican since we entered this seat. We have yet to have one. We've been waiting, please, audience. We've been waiting to have, to have this. We had six people vote for it and Mr. Piper, he wasn't on. But the unfortunate part is because it comes from LaDale Lewis, let me be abundantly clear. This, this person.
You know him.
My clerk, reached out to Officer Mr. Henderson. LaDale Lewis just followed up. Because we needed so badly. That the clerk is overwhelmed, so I stepped up.
Yeah, that's what she said.
So, this is some permission. It's okay, we can have, but we will have one.
Hold on, I have a woman by the counter, please, do not speak out of turn.
That is the fifth time. You have spoke out in that way. If this, I will continue, but you can't keep getting interrupted. By colleagues who keep taking the floor, that's a violation of council rules. And the same thing, you continue, then you will be more. So, moving on. What we have to do is exactly what this body asked for. We had six members ask for us to have a Republican come up here so we can make sure that we get it right. And that's exactly what we can do, see, Coach Sixmore sees the way the other hand, because this is what it looked like when we tried to bring order, when we tried to work together. So, this is how people feel about order. This is how people feel about the rule. This is how people feel about working, this is how people feel about working with their colleagues. That's very sweet, that's perfectly fine. But as we all vote against the Republican and order, so we can have our basic Republican training. Friday night, four hours.
Friday night.
Friday night, four hours from Friday night, is the time that he got a label. You don't want to come, you don't have to. It's that simple. But for those that want to run the government and run meetings the way that we are too, we would be in attendance. See, we, well, you can call special meetings and things like that, but things that we need, we want to, we want to do that with the head and make excuses, we got day night, but tell your man to come get some training too.
Oh, damn. Damn.
This, I'm tired of excuses. And I mean, I'm tired of it.
I mean, it's all from Mr. Lewis. Dr. Lewis, please, all of us, if you want to.
Who on her? Shit, enough is enough.
I agree, she did not refer anybody specifically that was.
I would, I would even proceed, but I also would say this too, she's the one that brought peanut day night.
She told you? So, she is talking to him.
Coloring our audience, thank you.
Okay, that's your first point, Miss, in the Michigan hat, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and now I'm gonna tell you.
What?
What?
What? What?
So, anyhow, the fact of the matter is, this body said they wanted a Republican. We waited for it to happen for a couple of years, since twenty twenty-one is twenty twenty-four. We reached out to the gentleman who agreed to be a part of this campaign. And so, guess what? We voted, he voted, this break is so far, I put it before the body, voted, voted up or down. But what I'm voting for, we're voting for order. So, if our colleagues want to continue in this melee of commotion coming from the audience against Republican colleagues,
We just kind of got to concentrate yet.
But you will have an answer to your, to your board. You will have an answer to your board, but again, we have six people vote for it. And unfortunately, that's sad to hear that Mr. Piper don't like the fact that I'm here. And we can talk about a lot of things that Mr. Piper negotiated or brought to fruition. We did not obtain it. We did not, because it needed to happen.
Alright, he gonna say that's something.
What up, good brother?
We need you down here. Our, our lives matter.
You know, we did, you know what, anyway, so, proceed, proceed. If you don't want it, just vote it down. But if you vote it for, vote it up. The matter through you, um, Madam Chair, to Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, did you reach out to Mr. Henderson in the back?
Yes, it was, this was my sister's first time on this, to, um, several Republicans.
Okay, thank you. Because clearly, the other Republicans didn't want to come back and shut this foolishness here, because of this foolishness here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to see Mr. Henderson at the chair? Councilperson in the board of the board?
This is just going to be a little bit, I've had that in conversations with a Republican from Long Island, and he watched on her, he doesn't want to know. So, um, I actually have an interest outside of Republican, and I never met him until then, till we talked to him. So, and, so we have talked on other occasions. However, I just want to make it clear that it is difficult to find someone who's willing to come and, and be involved in this mess. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would like to speak in the first round.
Yes.
Councilmember.
So, well, my colleague, uh, I, um, talked to, again, um, Juan, for Inez Brown, about trying to raise the Republicans and also do an orientation with the city council. One thing I think she did do is an orientation for us and the Republicans. But she didn't actually do an orientation with, when we go with grounds, house, or we go approve a resolution. And we still, I don't want to do that, I don't know about my colleagues. I know we don't want to, um, I am going to.
Right, sorry.
When we approve a resolution, this board gives us some money. Um, they are periodical, the, the party head of administration will come out to use orders and money. What's the next step? Signing the contract. And there are a lot of people, and I'm not sure how many out there, where we have, um, approved resolutions for them to get funding, that have not received funding or have not received contracts. So, I think those are some things that we need to understand better. How, what's the protocol, how that procedure happened? When we just was voting on president for city council, I reached out to, um, our clerk, the lady, and asked her, can she put that back? Even prior to us voting for president, I asked if she put on the agenda, um, having us give us training for us. I know we used to go to Lansing up under Inez Brown, she would send us to Lansing to do pop, um, training at the, um, Michigan Municipal League. This year, it didn't happen, or whatever, for whatever reason, it didn't happen. But Inez Brown came to us and gave us this application for us to fill out if we wanted to go. And some of us went down to Lansing to do that training. So, there are opportunities for us to take advantage of that, I, I'm just not sure. You know, are we supposed to go out and do it? Do our clerk go and listen for us? Do our president go and listen for us? Or this Republican procedure, even while we're in that meeting at Christ Fellowship, that they gave with all the different organizations put together, uh, um, time on, whatever, to talk about the business of demands that they wanted from city council. One of the demands was that they wanted us to get proper training, the Republican training. So, this is right up one of their to-do list on what they want to see happening with city council. Rather than it was councilman Dr. Lewis or, um, clerk, um, the victim that brought in someone for training. I know we and the victim may go on back and forth for the last year. Um, one of the things that she told me was that that it was hard for people to want to take on, come to city council for, uh, to train us. We don't have people that, um, the administration, uh, for example, the public works director, um, that came and looked at city council, I think even with the clerk, we had two candidates. And they didn't say that council meetings, and they probably was like, no, I, I don't want to. That's not a good look. It don't matter to me, whether Dr. Lewis did it or didn't do it, this is something that we need. But what I really see is happening is so personal, even with the public. You know, when you hear people out there, when you're talking about it, you hear some audience, not all, packing up or standing up because you, um, reached out to get someone Republican. And I seen this person come before, um, council, right? And speak with a public comment, because I've taken notes from them speaking. That's it, we need a Republican. Now, I've got it, and that same individual was back there making gestures and jumping up because you decided to, so I think it's more personal with them, than the fact that you have, um, reached out and through your leadership as a president, and them reaching out to the lady. When somebody decided to take on the role of, um, coming here to train us. I would be supporting this, I would be coming to the training.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, so this is how everyone has taken their time in the first round. I will take my time in the first round. I, I just want to say that, um, I, I remember from the very first meeting, I've been here for all of us. And we talked about a Republican, everybody's agreement that a Republican is needed. I remember I've done, had a conversation from colleagues about getting the bottom theory. And so, I think it is like my colleague said, I, I don't know what the solution is when, no matter who does what or whatever, there's going to be an issue. This is someone that, uh, the clerk had already reached out to herself. Um, we've been told time to time again that people do not come here, they don't feel as though, um, their services will be respected. And I, I just want to, uh, agree with Dr. Lewis in the fact that, um, this is now the time where we start showing that we will respect that person's time and their services. That everybody, the council sitting up here, has to refrain from name-calling and personal attacks. The audience has to refrain. Everybody in this room, I'm looking around, there's not one child in this room, everybody in this room is an adult, is an adult. And I'm pretty sure there are almost everybody in this room is older than me. And so, we have enough time, experience in life. I said almost in life, god. We have enough experience in life to where we know how to conduct ourselves. And just kind of use emotional regulation and refrain from disrespect. I think what it all boils down to is, we have to be willing to respect each other. Whether you're an audience member, whether you're a councilperson, whether you're leading a meeting or not, there has to be a willingness for respect, it has to be a willingness to, um, stick to the agenda act. There has to be a willingness when this person comes in to respect their expertise, even if you don't necessarily agree with it, there's a way to respectfully disagree. But nobody up here is saying that we don't need the Republican. I think we are all agreeing that it has to happen. I think there are residents in agreement with the fact that it has to happen. We have to do better, we are on a national stage, whether we like it or not. And so, now we need to present the best base for our plans. And if this gets us in the wrong to do that, then let's do it. There's a way that we look at this and, and compromise, but something like, I mean, let's figure that out now. But the bottom line is, we need to move forward, because we can't keep dragging our feet. The training has been offered on Friday, February second. It is not ideal trust and belief. But I am going to, um, forfeit whatever plans I thought I had to make sure that I am there, because I am committed to learning the rules, learning things properly, learning the rule, learning to be respectful, and using tools to, and often neglect myself, and make sure I'm respectful of everyone, whether they agree or not. But I, the bottom line is, this is needed. Uh, I am done with my time in the first rounds, and everyone would like to go in the second round. Councilman Piper, please, go to your chair. Councilman Piper, thank you.
Will you give your bandwidth for the additional expense of the virus at sixty-seven cents a mile? And food, whether you're requesting in the contract? So, uh, what is that other value? And who's going to, because the contract says that you have four hours of time. Who's going to take that from the company though?
So, what?
For what meetings? Is it the next, the one for city council meeting? The three seven council meeting?
Yes, that, I cooked the food.
Um, are we skipping a meeting or anything? Like whether you show up after, the time you start happy some of the time? Are they going, um, putting it out to you, I just think that before we view this, when the city council is reviewing this contract, um, we need to come up with a dollar value for all these extra desk, desk expenses, mileage, um, meals. I think there's a lot of questions, um. Um, I'm not going to go to this, but.
She just got the S.
There is a, I'm going to make a note, unfortunately, saying that this to, um, two four zero one two, a Republican can't be canceled to government ops, is there a report? It's been moved in progress, reported, is there a discussion? Councilwoman, is that anyone else?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's get moving, probably supported. Go back. Ms. Graceley?
Yes.
Is that?
No.
Is that?
Question, question.
Yeah. Do you like it?
No.
Whose phone is that?
It's up there.
Councilwoman, would they please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Was it you that called? Book is three EBS, four, no, to that event, to send to.
That was called a question.
Excuse me, that was a bad one. Yes.
So, I'm reading this contract, and I don't know what you said, Mr. Piper, but it, I mean, the resolution says top two, twenty-eight hundred, that means nothing more than that. Doesn't matter mileage, food, whatever, it's up to.
What's your, what's your question?
But the resolution states twenty-eight under cover, maximum. It doesn't matter the fact that it's set at fifty-one.
Thank you, your challenge here. Councilwoman.
Thank you. So, this is really open ended, and during the contracts, uh, who can vet it within the city council? He usually signs off on them to make sure that they're correct. So, if we're, if we're saying he meals and he's down here, that's, that's expensive. Let us go by the facts and he wants, this, Mr. Wilson wants to pay for all his services. I mean, we should, I think this should be exact dollar amount as to, um, it's kind of open in, I think it's open in. Yes, we need, um, councilor to check, it's not a work here, we got our personnel changes. I just don't think it's over. I really don't, it's not, I guess we can bring our dates on Friday night, and they say we can leave with us during the train. So, I got, I got all brought there already.
Ladies, your request.
I was not aware of that.
Beautiful, oh, this train, go ahead.
So, if we, and then that's how we go. You know, and we, um, how, how does that look? We're not at this meeting. I mean, we had this year in this league trade, which I thought was really well, when we had. And we had in two thousand twenty-two, maybe, she had it for her. And we had, and I thought that was really, she didn't call it back up. Then that's kind of completely, we were going to, um, um, to Lansing, and we were just going to strip it ours. But, I mean, we were kind of out of court. Um, and in that itself, I mean, it changed a lot of things. But, and you're talking about a training, we still have problems with the, the fact that, based on how many men was the problem. She hasn't been here long enough, so we still have a problem.
We still have special affairs.
We've got to look at.
It's nine o'clock, we ain't even making the council meeting here.
At ourselves.
We're not even making the meeting, we're still special affairs.
And like I said, I did two minutes in my, two minutes, and when I was mine, her, I didn't relate.
Man, I ain't.
I broke five times, she was in New Orleans times. She's done. So, she, she paused now, they're getting, so now, we can simply come here. Will be, you know, we're coming here to see us, we, um, resolution, I mean, it's like game of Thrones up here. It is, it is serious. So, I think we need to have this contract looked at by city council. Because what is this meal, uh, you know, how far, what is this, we have sixty-seven cents a month, um, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, about fifty dollars, which I would be, um, prepared to gas. But I think that.
Thank you. Um, okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak up? Okay, that's my number.
So, well, my colleague, she's speaking sometimes, uh, that she fought a gas line. It just made me, because I have some questions. Again, when she didn't talk, it just, you make me want to just say yes. Just because, it, it don't make sense that if we sit there and talking about it wasn't loose in the contract, why is it so personal that?
Question, what's your request?
We about to start hopping.
What's your question?
It's two minute wait.
Oh! No water, no water.
Please hold it, what is your point of order?
Point of order is, this is the fifth time she has spoke out of turn, now she threatened to lock somebody up.
That would be the worst, so you need to understand.
Again, she doesn't even got to go down, come to you.
Thank you. Chair. Thank you, there's your point, as well, taking the council member, please refrain from speaking, you do not have a fourth. Thank you, Councilmember.
Um, to my, um, colleague, that's true. It's unfortunate that all night, my colleague, Sixmore, has been flirting off, um, taking cheap shots at us. And she, we, when we call point of order, instead of you giving her a warning, you will just tell us, proceed, and then that's how the back and forth go. And that's how we can end up getting into this, um, going back and forth. And that's not what we want to do, we want, I want to talk about the resolution. And my colleague interrupted me by wondering about something, because I'm making a general statement. And then here we go, she did not even get the floor, that's against the council rules. And you failed and continued to not give her a warning. And I understand you want to just rest aside, but when is enough now? Because we, we both can go, and I want to do that. All I want to do is really speak on this agenda, and I don't want to take no shots. So, I was just saying, every time you talk around, while we just can't speak to the agenda, the resolution. But, um, on the resolution.
Please hold, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Wilson, would you please, your call to order?
No, you gotta get her.
Mr. Mr. Wilson, you. Mr. Wilson, could you please stop yelling up here?
You, right. Oh, shit, come on now.
Thank you.
He threatened.
Conversation.
Vote.
Refrain from this conversation.
Vote.
Please continue.
Um.
Please hold it. Please refrain from calling council members' names from the audience.
Who did?
Please refrain. Mr. Wilson's yelling now, I didn't even say your name this time, I didn't say you did, I just looked in that general direction. This is not a back and forth between you and I either, Mr. Wilson, please stop. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, I'm, I'm working on the task duties and stuff of work. Uh, I'm seeing where the, the council is fighting this contract. When the company shot in LaDale Lewis, I think this should be, instead of being LaDale Lewis, this should be the clerk, the green. Because the clerk have way more knowledge when it comes now to all Republican far as votes are involved in that city council. And they can touch bases with each other, and I feel more comfortable if this, um, have, um, no disrespect to the one that the council president has done. Um, but I think maybe we should activate our own area and keep the little.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Councilwoman, what are you here for?
Um, one of you, one of you were on the last council that are here today. But this is exactly the situation that we wanted to get, um, to field as president. And she also spoke with Lawrence. Um, and so, all of this is exactly how it was at the last council, I think. Or, I mean, how, with the last council, um, there's nothing we can do. So, just like then, it is delayed, delay, make up reasons. You know, because no one really wants to know, if they're not allowed, you say they don't like someone up. Because then we'd get corrected, or they would tell the president, that's not allowed. And instead of just saying over and over, please stop, council members need to be warned and removed, uh, for threats. Um, I, I was threatened out in the audience member, or by an audience member. Um, it's like, grow up. You know, grow up.
She won't even look over here.
Thank you. Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak, uh, um?
Looking like the whole damn Rose Garden.
Oh, Councilmember.
Three minutes.
Three minutes for our project.
That's why I hope we support sending back everyone out. There's an attorney sometime. And I hear you, Mr. Murphy, but I don't know. This is their contract. We have the ability to manage their contract without their knowledge. So, um, and I just did that. So basically you paid a hundred dollars, thirty times on. So, on that, please, the gentleman subtracts me. A half hour, thirty times on. So do we need to?
No, they're not polar bear. It's a big silverback. She can play for the Lions.
We all come and please do our best.
Help them win the Super Bowl.
Yeah, you also.
Big Mac, mine.
Make them offer a special place. Some question. And they come up and it's, they involve their hours in one year. Where they believe, not a couple, you know, I see you over there as well. For you.
Member.
In my name. Um, this is why I just processed it a little differently.
Uh huh.
And I think that the charter has what it did this, you can resonate.
Right.
More than one person.
Tell them, thank you.
Yeah.
You make the parameters.
Yeah.
And often to that person instead of doing that.
Yeah, you love.
And the dollar now was just based on, I had seen this contract control to the.
They go, they, wow.
You know, the needs and I was, I didn't.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I draft a resolution. So, but yes, the council has set parameters and that's why.
She said she ain't about to be live for the ass.
Send a budget.
She ain't about to be live.
And then people.
Budgets, do we still have?
Yeah.
Do we have dollars for the business?
So again, I was told to take out a certain account. I would take out a different account. We do have dollar amounts in your professional services account. So it's just how much do you want to spend.
Wow.
Instead, it's like your lead is less of ten hours. You want to give a whole week. So now, but I just, if you set a dollar amount, definitely use that amount. But if it's my, which is happening, then we're done. So what I have to do is, uh, the council says. So then.
Yeah. And then what happens if they come up and?
I wanna say. Did you see?
There's.
Like an ass here.
If you don't have a reason, they just hang everything around. Like, I think there's a lot of questions. So I'll just pass them. I know. I understand. But we really do have a.
Um. Uh, the only person besides myself who's not spoken on this motion is Dr. Lewis. So Mr. Wilson, would you like to take your time?
Thank you. Um, all of you concerned with the cash out right here. The, um, Madam Clerk, she stated that she didn't receive it until before the meeting. Um, he sent it to me before the meeting. Because he is a well-saw after the problematic. So clearly he knows what he's doing. And, um, you know, he's a lot of thing, I know, but what he said was one hundred seventy five dollars is, is his rate. And so, and so what I looked at was the rate for the basic power charity training, which we need. And then for them to come with three subsequent meetings were up to four hours. That's what, that's what we ran. So that way we can, um, get the knowledge and then we can put the knowledge into practice right after. That is, um, that will call for us. So I have a problem with the term of looking at it. I don't have a problem with the term of looking at it at all. Uh, yeah, but we have, um, council meetings to go to, so, I mean, again. We can do the work and get it done if we really want to. It sounds, just like you already said, it sounds too personal. I understand if you don't like it. So, yeah, we still need to get this done. And so, um, we still will get this done. And for one seventy five dollars for what we have to put up with? I mean, imagine you have colleagues talking about, like, we don't think we can get it done. While they shooing their hand at people and stuff like that. Is that what we're here for? We're here to still get it done. We have colleagues giggling and interrupting people as they speak. Using frivolous, um, press information to take the floor. This, yeah, that's why we need our reasons in here to put this stuff in perspective. So we all can have understanding that this is not the way things go. So what I'm doing wrong, what has Murphy done wrong, what was going wrong, it can be corrected and we can move forward in the name of doing good business for the city. We could waste too much time. We scared, yeah, I mean, we have scared out our eyes. It's fine. Look what you want to do. But at the end of the day, we still need a party hearing to come in here. This body stated that they needed, last meeting, we, we spoke about it. We talked about sending the government outs. And what did they say? I was told, let's go ahead and bring it to the floor. I was told, let's, don't talk about it, bring it to the floor. So we have to go ahead. The county president brought it to the floor. So if you have a problem with it, it's the time to address it. But that one seventy five dollars? It might not even be enough for what you have to deal with up here with this in the office. I get it. So let's get a minute to learn, to do, to start trying to see what we can do more. Well, that's what's not kind of mid pick and qualify and not really not to do. It's crazy. And I'm here to get this worked on. So let's start processing that. I hope we ask to get it done. So we can go on. Thank you.
Um, thank you. I will take a second of my time. Right now, what we are actually voting on, so that everybody is prepared to tell them, we go rounds and rounds, right? But we are on a different motion to send this to finance, Councilor Mike Fermaine, different, I'm excuse, the government outs, Councilor Mike Fermaine. Um, a motion to send this to government outs. Um, in this amount of time that we've been talking about this, both of ourselves and the audience has proven well, people need to be present for the charity training. So I just can be present. I would strongly suggest they're present as well. We all need the training. So. Let's just, um, this is. So one round, and this vote is to send it to government outs. This was the immediate motion as opposed to the city against council. So now you will be voting to send to four zero zero one two, Public衕ity Council to government outs. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
They need Dr. Buckle.
Who's first?
Yes.
No.
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 The vote is two yes, five no. That, uh, motion has failed. Now we go back to round two. Sending it to council, people that have already spoken in round two is, um, our colleague in the second ward and our colleague in the eighth ward, our colleague in the ninth ward has the floor.
Call for question.
Oh, um, call a question. All right, um, our colleague in the ninth ward has a question. And the question has involved, is there any support?
Support.
Has been properly supported. We are going to call the question. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Yes.
Maybe she should have said yes this time.
Yes.
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 Oh, let me finish a poll.
Yes.
The vote is five yes, two no. We will move to proceed with sending, uh, with roll call, Madam Clerk to send. And two four zero zero one two, Public衕ity Council to council. Roll call. Mr. Whitehead.
Absolutely no.
Is there?
Yes.
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 Absolutely yes.
I abstain because our city attorney has not vetted this contract. Because most contracts are vetted by the city attorney. Yes.
Why do you say?
The vote is five yes, one no, one赞成, and a resolution two four zero zero one two, Public衕ity Council, roll call to council. We are now on to resolution two four zero zero one four. Our flying be allocation college cultural association and from the gate to the hub as fiduciary, um, is there?
Madam Chair.
Let's do that.
No, I got one more after this.
Four zero zero one four, made the engagement hub, but we forgot the cultural center, um, as fiduciary.
It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and properly supported. Is there discussion?
They want to see the fishing pole. Let me get some of the fishing pole.
So. The. This first ring, three months.
Yep, this part, two, please join me second.
So. The fifty thousand dollars that they want to be fiduciary, ten percent of the, we have to pay it at half a million dollars?
One.
Right, so.
So. To be fiduciary, they're paying, we usually pay ten percent. So we're going to allocate fifty thousand dollars for them to be a fiduciary? For what amount?
They're asking for fifty thousand.
But this is to be the fiduciary.
No. I mean, habitat, is that okay?
So this is the neighborhood engagement hub for reallocation of college cultural association.
How much, how much is the neighborhood engagement hub going to get as the?
Normally, I think here, I guess I can say.
Right.
So, what is, what is your project?
So they have, um, the park, uh, Pierce Park, is it Pierce Park? The park behind, uh, the, uh, Pierce Elbers. It used to be a golf course. And so they have been cleaning off the area and making it into a trail and just kind of giving the, the community a place, a, a part of rest and, uh, good, they'll see the trees, the scenery. But some of the trails and some of the flowers have been eaten by native, uh, vine flowers. And so they even cleared those out. They didn't put something out. It's kind of killed them. And then they wanted to, uh, just move, uh, kind of clear paths for the native walk, uh, in the park and enjoy exercise and things like that.
They don't care about this.
Uh, excuse me, I want, can we pause this time? Pardon me.
It's the, it's the five dollars. So immediately, she's talking now. I got to have one more. Chairman President speaking out of order.
All right, they have, they have this first. Go ahead. Go ahead. What's your point? Yes, I, go ahead.
Do you, to, um, my colleague in, uh, six words.
This has got to be for him. He has, she doesn't have it. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Oh, 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 one more.
Please, please pause this time again.
Because I was like, talk to me.
Uh.
No, I heard.
Okay, so, proceed, Mr. Murphy.
I guess Democrats know how this one is going to spend. I understand that this is going to go for, for the meetings and everything else, but. And they did, because in my part, they came with bids and proposals. I was thinking, I'm, so.
So, so now that the.
Shit, I don't know what's going on here. We still ain't got the council meeting yet. Y'all gonna be going to Art Woods and Live pretty soon, cause I'm going home.
The college cultural area, which is a group of, uh, the neighborhood, uh, residents, uh.
But, but is this going to go to, to the group of residents that, or is this going to buy, we, we?
It's, it's got a lot of light in that area. So some of the trails have, uh, trash. And they were using that as a dump ground too, a dumping ground over there through the park. And so they have a lot of trash to remove. They have a lot of bricks, you know, there's.
This is for them butterflies and bad for deals, kind of. And butterflies.
And so what, so purpose is just so that they get the trees that, uh, Pierce Park and recreation. Because they have a lot of older people in that area that like to walk. But because of the bad trees and all the weeds and things like that, it's not, like, if they get behind a tree, you can't see it. So it's kind of a scary situation. So they want to.
Shit, telling them to walk through Forest Park, that's real scary.
How does this get verified? And then now can?
I don't know that to me. How does it verify?
You said you do it, don't you? So please, and this is for anybody, that I don't, I'm not, college folks or whatever, is, is, is one. That's before this question. How does this get verified by the administration or, uh, versus young? That something was done?
Well, I really, because they may be, they saw, and I think they do have, um, folks and things like that, like, they don't have artists. But I remember meeting with them a lot.
How, how do we verify that trees were removed, um?
Well, of course, they don't have a contract. They're just workers that they, um, are organization.
Oh, he live, art live now. He right here. Doing nothing. Even say he threatening. He can do nothing.
And, uh, so they're going to use that same person.
So when we get a audit of all of these problems, will they receive specifically? And, and this is not just to them, but anybody. How do we, like, change and measure whether or not a program is successful?
Well, they will have, uh, because they're going to have a contract to give you work. So they will have a bid process. They will have.
All right, uh, Councilor, can I wait for your report more?
Yes, um, Michelle, I got a vote for her. I'm looking at this. And, you know, my biggest thing, okay? And I'm going to look at, add on number four as well for the tool shed. Okay, so on two four zero zero one four. The neighborhood engagement hub is a fiduciary for college cultural center. Or neighborhood's. I'm, I should write her. I went into. Oh, Michelle, thank you so much. Right now, I remember when it was meeting.
I'm gonna come back again. We haven't even made it to council meeting.
They make it to town. The jury fees of three, three, six, one, they're on the tool shed. Not only that, but the. This is thirty, this is fifteen thousand of the fifty thousand.
This makes the county look like a well.
So I'm making this, let's get to motion, because I think these two reservations are all.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Um, I'm going to raise motion to cross the champion, raise the redo. Two four zero zero one four and. And on the.
Okay.
Cause we live in progress. She's.
That's exactly why I said.
I thought it was. Nine thirty. And they have not got the council meeting yet.
That's important, because it's dollars and ten percent fiduciary. I don't know. I got my, and this is my question as well. We don't have, in this two four zero zero one four.
They don't get along.
The allocation for. And just say that their projects cost forty five thousand and five thousand one hundred two.
It's gonna take more than part of. We need a mental health physician.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Councilor.
All right, we are calling for the question to post call. Indefinitely, as we move on.
Be gone with this fishing pole.
And this is a call for the question, roll call, number four. This one.
If that's where the people gonna be staying at in the damn park.
No. No. Vote for yes, three, no, and that, and anybody else who would like to, please, now, chair.
Come on, right, thank you, and all this problem question, cutting off, it's not fair to each person, because they want to get out of here or want to go back, it's not free with that. And so I think we have to be fair to each person, and if we listen, you know, to put each person respectful, and they want to have a valid attorney, be respectful. So, Ms. Jones, first, we need to receive anything on this, like, in detail, um, because I think they also asked for a paid trail, that comes with it.
No, that was, that was, yeah, that was, yeah, the trail was already there, they were asking.
Oh, clear, okay, okay.
Yeah, so we have wetlands and all kinds of things in that, in that area.
Uh, you caught that dollar bill, yeah.
We have somewhere, we feel safe, we're down there. Yeah, I went to Pierce School, you could do hours, you could walk through there and, you know, do a little sample, right, you know, down by the creek, um, and I walked, that's where I came out of elementary school, man. And it was a golf course, and, yeah, I think, golf course, and I stayed in the rain, picture, and here's the, um, plugging edge of things, back then. So, I think, and I listen to what they're saying, with the fiduciary amount, and when you get these add-ons, it's really not fair for everyone, we're just, we, 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 now, really.
Yeah, we don't know.
Making a decision, as opposed to having time, and maybe over the weekend to go through them, so I will be supporting to post call this indefinitely, but I think my colleagues, these could be so disrespectful with your call for the question, because we have questions.
Here we go, tooth talk, with, with it.
To you, to the speaker, do you know the call for questioning is in the council room?
Proceed, now, now, he's proceeding.
No matter, that, Mr. Wannabe Critical, they should be back now. You know, break the rule, and talk about before, didn't ask for a Z, he talked about, I am Z, he broke through, I could read, and I could comprehend, and I can, I can respond very clearly. And I'm also requesting that email with them Christmas gifts, he sent her twenty second, and she has to be completely in line with that. She was giving gift cards that go down, so, that's a core, can you, can you?
I can't take this shit.
He's classic, the person in third ward.
Councilman Murphy, please, proceed.
I mean, did anybody say on time, and I have talked, and, and, and. How, how, excuse me, she didn't.
My phone ignored her, that's why Mr. Murphy being in the middle of the clock, councilwoman Murphy is not speaking to the government, so she got me.
Okay, but she's.
Motherfucker said boo.
She didn't, she didn't ask for the board, she took the board, then went back, now she wants a whole tear, you don't exhibit the.
Where was, excuse me.
That motherfucker said boo.
This bar is getting off topic, off of the logic, you know, we're, we're just trying to talk about this resolution in the fourth, that's not part of the board.
Okay, so, um, couple things, all night, and I've been patient with everybody, everybody's been trying to cheer my knee, stop, proceed, Ms. Murphy.
So Pierce Park is a, that golf course, I know they aren't, but what's the man burned down, but it is an area, and that community has gotten older, older here.
She forgot to wrap their hair around that ponytail.
My age, my daughter's age thirty three, thirty four, they bought, some of them really walk on so quick, and so they like to, you know, to utilize that area, and so I think we need to get the numbers down, and I hear what they're saying, hey, you must hit the back, and definitely get the numbers and the fiduciary, and how much, um. So you just want to see the fiduciary cost. Yeah, I think so, see, um, one thing that we had, when I called, the parks were, were cold.
Thank you, thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Um, eighth ward, six, six, eight, spoken.
Yeah, um, I want to speak.
Councilman, the second one.
Oh, right, so I am looking at the resolutions that were sent up, so.
We need Dr. Buckle, Paige and Dr. Buckle.
And before, yeah, and we read them. Yep, and we had, uh, this, this one was postponed before, and then we got re-checked to put it together.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, so wait, hold it, wait, this is, this is the one that was.
It has to be, that would be a risk.
Yeah, okay, okay, so I see that was probably, okay, well, there's only, you know.
You ain't lying, get Dr. Buckle a hundred and seventy five dollars an hour.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else who would like to address this? Um, resolution, anybody else, anybody else? All right, I'm going to take my time, um, and then, we are on, how many minutes? Three minutes, all right, so this has already come before us once before, and as soon as before, we postponed it, and it's taken us months to get this back and forth. Part of the invasive species that they want to address, this has to be addressed in February while it is cold, or we are throwing money into the wind at this point. And so, all this time, that we're wasting, all this time, that this was not already bought back to us here, there are things, I'm sorry, one, one second, please pause, please pause my time.
They just break it, they have.
Okay, so, go ahead, one, two, three, four, five, six. Thank you, thank you, thank you for correcting what is happening there, can you please stop my time, because I'm trying to speak to an important agenda item, and I need everybody to be an adult right now, so I can get through this. Again, this has already been postponed from us, it's the end of January, um, part of the work that they want to do, in order to give them the invasions, it has to be done while the weather's still cold, if February's their window, I'm also looking at the amount of time that it takes for the city to actually give people the money, right? And then you're talking about the, the reimbursement process, even give them the money upfront to give you back the receipts to, if you.
This, this is Karen, this war, y'all, this her war.
That if we do not get this right right now, you are wasting fifty thousand dollars, I don't think y'all understand what's happening with this project, but this is important, we can't keep getting resolutions up here incorrectly. Everything is time sensitive, I understand that there are so many other people waiting, so many other people who have time sensitive projects as well, which is why I don't understand why we all can't just focus on the agenda items that are upon us. I am not going to postpone this.
We know, it's in your war.
This has to be done, again, second time, now we're looking at postponing again, and who knows when we'll see it again. I'm going to tell you right now, what you're going to do is waste fifty thousand dollars if you think that you can push this through later. Stop wasting time, stop wasting money, let's do this, I'm done.
She's, she's done.
Okay, Matthew Clark, so that was one round, that's another round we get there, correct? And that is, the, right now, it's on there, postpone this indefinitely, correct? Roll call, Matthew Clark, we're going to postpone two four zero zero one four, our funds, reallocation, college folks, neighborhood association, neighborhood engagement hub, as the judiciary, we're going to postpone it indefinitely, roll call, Matthew Clark. Roll call, Matthew Clark, we're also allowing along for the audience, so that everybody is on the same page. This is also for a resolution approving reallocation of ARPA funds to award ARPA funds to neighborhood engagement hub, a replacement of zero turnbears, and serving as fiduciary in responding to impacts of the pandemic on life in the city. Roll call, Matthew Clark. Miss Lewis.
No.
Where you going? Oh, I said, don't walk out yet, because I'll walk out with you.
No.
Okay.
The vote is four yes, three no.
Hell yeah, we about to send all of these people over there to your thing.
They ain't even, they ain't even started council meeting, it is almost ten o'clock.
So, uh, I would like to, for, for the resolution two four zero zero one four, I would like to, uh, make it to a point one, and add the five thousand dollar fiduciary.
There is a motion on the floor to, made two four zero zero one four, to point one behind that, and to add the, uh, for every fiduciary amount to that, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported, is there discussion, right, chair? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, so, um, I, I didn't want to, it would have been easy to drop and move on, but I wanted to just go ahead and just get this work done really quick, because it look like we have some stuff to fix, it look like, uh, didn't need to be fixed one, I'm going to, two four zero zero one four, is just having fiduciary to be in line with what we've done for the rest of the resolutions that require fiduciary. So, uh, they will receive the amount given, and the, uh, and the, the ten percent will come towards the fiduciary fee, so I think this will clean up, um, resolution two four zero zero one four, so we can move on, and we can, uh, move on to the next thing, go on to council. So, I'm willing to, because I don't want to, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fetter.
Do you, do you mind if I, like, say, because, because, um, we have a thing about looking people more money than they're asked for, so.
It's fifty thousand.
They asked, sir, so, they asked for fifty thousand, not anything related to fiduciary, so my question is, should we leave the dollar amount, should that not be stay fifty thousand? And, and change the resolutions to forty five?
We've added, um, the ten percent, uh, what we've done in the past, on a few ones that we've done with the neighborhood engagement hub.
Just the neighborhood education, like, the others, we have allocated.
Just what they asked.
What they asked for, and then the fiduciary, not that, so now we're allocating the more than they've asked for.
That's just for the, for the.
Well, I would, would watch, it's a fair discussion. I mean, how much is the project going to cost? That's, that's my, we usually have courts, and everything else, and, and, you know, the project, they might have had, cost forty five, forty, they have a contingency, they'll, which now.
Oh shit, okay, good people, I'm going to need everybody to go to Arthur Woodsen Facebook page, because, um, I got eight percent, and they still, they still haven't, they still haven't got to council meeting yet, so y'all. They coming to protect you, so you can quit. If it wasn't for eight, ten, you wouldn't have nobody. Y'all going over there to Art. We about to go home. You welcome, you welcome, they ain't even got the council meeting yet, Art ain't got nothing else to do, he'd be down here all night. Good night, y'all, y'all going over there, everybody go over there, tell them, tell Art Winter, say, tell them hello, everybody, every, everybody go over there and say. Everybody go over there and tell Art to quit threatening evil. Go tell Art, we said hello. Go tell Art, go on, y'all, I'm going to give y'all a chance, go to Arthur Woodsen. Come on, y'all, go over there, go tell Art, y'all go tell them y'all love A one O. Go on to tell Art, make him happy, yeah, go tell him Winter sent you, keep going. Keep going, y'all. Go on, y'all, go ahead, keep telling Art, Winter sent y'all.
All right, so, I know that we have, I've seen that we added five thousand.
Keep going, y'all going over there to Art now, see y'all later.